So talk directly into your mic.
All right, we got back up. Okay, if you can raise mine just a little if possible. Thank you. We got Commissioner Everett on the phone here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get started with our workshop. Thank you for coming.
And it'll be back on tomorrow if there's no rain, we'll turn it back on and we'll run it. But we're still waiting on sensor timer and the overall engine timer that comes on at 10:00 AM, shuts off at 7 o'clock or 6 o'clock, and then the actual touch timer that comes on that you can kick it on like every 10 or 15 minutes after it goes off. So those two timers are not talking to each other right now. And so the electrical engineers are trying to figure out why not. Because those are two parts no one thought we had to replace until we fixed everything else. And then we realized that those timers were not set appropriately. And then they realized, well, let's just order new ones. And so that's where we are. But we can run it manually, and that's what we're gonna do.
And if we could, if we can just put that announcement up on the marquee that the splash pads is open, I think part of it probably haven't gotten out to the community that says available for their use now.
We're still working on July 4th fireworks. We're planning for that, ongoing. We're gonna have another great event as usual. I think we're gonna have a little spin on it this year. We have some additional vendors out there. I think our movie night sort of gave us some additional ideas for the 4th of July on the lake. So we're gonna try to add a different twist to it this year for 4th of July. And hopefully, you know, the community will be pleased with what we provide to them for 4th of July activities. So after the barbecue at your house, you know, come out to the marina and enjoy a good fireworks show. I do believe there'll be some food trucks there as well. I just don't know how many and what type, be it dessert or regular, you know, general food items. I'm just not sure yet. But we are working on that.
And the mail chutes, the addition of sign, do we have any projection date on when that may also be put up? I know Ms. Scarborough have been acting on social media. I just felt, you know, you may have been responding to it, I'm not sure. But if we do have a date or some type of timeframe on the possibility of that being completed, so we can just continue to move forward?
No, I have no new information on the mail teller sign. I know there's some additional logistics that goes into zoning and right away because it's on the opposite end of East Main Street. So there are some things that we have to look at more carefully, you know, some of that state road as well in that corridor. And so it's such a small space. We think we have an idea where the next one would go, but we just, I haven't gotten an update from building, planning, and zoning on what they've recommended to me yet. So I can follow up with that and get an answer too. The citizen is asking.
Right. And commissioners, I know Vice Mayor Mervin brought it up. I've brought it up a few times. It was my desire to honor Anquan Bolden also in some form or fashion with some type of signage and a recognition day. So at our regular commission meeting, if a commission can put out a motion, I would like the city to start planning and working towards that being, doing some recognitions of him. I know during the graduation, again, he had given $10,000 to deserving high school graduate. Not only does he do it here in the city of Pahokee, he also does it in Belgrade also. And that's on a consistent annual basis.
Mayor, if I can say, I wasn't really the first just as a sign, but just as an honor because, you know, our city is a small city. And if you keep riding through every intersection, you're gonna see signs of people, you know. I know it's okay to honor them, but to me, when you go to sign, you might see, welcome to the city of Pahokee, welcome to the city of Belgrade, you know, just as something of showing, you know, I don't think it has to be no, no sign, you know, I don't, you know, but I think just as a honor to, you know, for the work he does do in the city of Pahokee.
Yeah. Okay, we can look at that. I know it was, you know, my desire to do a sign. I know at some point, you're right, you know, I also have some cutoffs, and it shouldn't be so regularly. But I don't think anybody can argue that as far as giving bike to the community. He's after the number one in that area. So it would be, you know, my desire to at least honor him in that manner. But as we move forward, I definitely think you're correct on that. We need to limit it and maybe do some other type of honor other than a lot of the signing. Any, any additional questions from the City Commission? And then at this time, we will adjourn our workshop and reconvene in three minutes. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. City Attorney, are you ready?
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
City Clerk, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Everett?
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin?
Red.
Havel Quon. I call this City Commission of the City of Pahokee Regular Commission Meeting of Tuesday, June 11, 2019, at 6:31 to order. May we please send for the invitation given by Reverend Margaret Smart, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Gracious God, Father of us all, we give you thanks and praise for this day. We thank you for the rain that we've had and for the sunshine today. We ask you to be with each one of our commissioners and our mayor, our city employees. Help them, Lord, to do what is best for this town. Help them to know what is needed without any harm given to anyone in our city. We ask you to bless each citizen here and for those that are out there listening to this program. And bless each one of our commissioners and our city mayor and our city employees. In Jesus' holy name, amen.
My allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Bab?
Present.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill, Vice Mayor Mervin?
Present.
City Manager?
Yes.
City Attorney?
Here.
City Clerk?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff. And thank you to you all for being here today to participate in our regular commissioner meeting of Tuesday, June 11, 2016. Apologize a little for the speaking ability. Just to mention again, I had a four-hour surgery this week. My mouth is closed. I'm eating with a straw. A young lady saw me at the pharmacy and called my brother and said, you need to go and pray for your brother and visit him. He's losing weight and he can't talk. I don't know what matter with him. So, just an update. As we indicated in our commissioner workshop earlier year, we have a short agenda. We're gonna get you out here on time and not delay anything. We'll move right along with our agenda. First call of business is the additions, deletions, and approval of the agenda item. City Manager, at this time, do we have any additions that's been added on?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution 2019-30.
City Commissioners, any requests of additions or deletions? All right, now, now entertain a motion to approve our agenda with the add-on of resolution 2019-30.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the addition, deletion, and approval with the add-on of the resolution 2019-30.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden that we adopt our agenda with the one addition of the resolution 2019-31. All for questions. All right, now, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. The motion to adopt our agenda passes by a unanimous five to zero vote. Four, four vote, four zero, with Commissioner Hill absent. Citizen comments? Must be agenda item only. City Clerk, at this time, do we have any citizen comments card completed?
No, sir, not regarding the agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda will be public service announcements. You also must have a public service comment card completed. City Clerk, at this time, do we have any citizen public comments card completed?
Um, no, sir, not at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Approval of the minutes of May 14, 2019, commissioner workshop minutes. We also have our regular scheduled commission meeting minutes of May 14, 2019. In addition to that, we have a special meeting minutes of May 30, 2019. City Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the approval of the minutes, May 19, 2019, our commission workshop minutes, also May 14, I'm sorry, 2019, regular scheduled commission meeting, and May 30, 2019, special meeting minutes.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the approval of the May 14, 2019, commission workshop minutes, the May 14, 2019, regular scheduled commission minutes, and the May 30, 2019, special minutes, meeting minutes. Call for questions. All right, now, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. The minutes of the various meetings has passed it by a four oh vote. Now we will move to our consent agenda item. We don't have any consent agenda items. We don't have any ordinance. We do have an add-on resolution, resolution 2019-30. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 219-30, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the city manager to request that the Board of Trustees of the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the State of Florida provide the city with the release of deed restrictions for the property described in attached composite exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam. City Attorney, City Commissioners, haven't had resolution 2019-30 properly read into the minutes. What's your pleasure?
May I make a motion to accept resolution 2019-30?
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption of resolution 2019-30. Call for questions.
I have one. City Attorney, I know I asked this in the commission meeting, or in the workshop, but I'm, I'm still a little confused. So if you could just clarify this for me. This is asking for us to have the deed restrictions on that property lifted, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then in the resolution, it says that it's for new housing, and it won't cause us a problem, if I'm correct, that's what I understand from the city manager, that it doesn't say economics, but in his report, he had economics and housing. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear which one we're getting.
Sure. The housing language is the language that's used within the comp plan. That's so, that's what the state wants the reference to be. And I think that the manager, as he explained before, added economic development in his report because he believes that this will spur economic development. So, but we have it correct in the resolution, and that's what the state is asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, now, now, at this time, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Resolution 2019-30 passes by a four oh vote. We don't have any public hearings. We don't have any proclamations. Now we'll move into our presentation. Indices of the month. This month, Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin selected the two businesses. Just a tradition each month, we identify two businesses in our community, and we continue to ask the community's support for these various businesses. We're gonna have Commissioner Mervin just give some preliminary on the two businesses. Then we'll go downstairs here and present the business of the month to the two businesses.
Mayor Bab, thank you. The two that I chose, I know we did pretty much every business in the city of Pahokee. So what I did, we went out of Little Forest and chose some organization that's also bring, does community efforts in our community. And the first one is Pahokee Deliverance Christian Center, which is an after-school program, also is a summer camp program. And as we know, that program is funded by the Early Learning Coalition and is ran by, you know, the pastor Willie Hickman and Brenda Hickman. And we have them here with some of their, their, their students today. So, and the other one, we have also Balanced Living Mentorship, who is ran by, you know, Mr. Hakeem Baines, and also that also partnership with Anquan Bolden. So, but we'll have them tell a little there when they get up. If we could do the Pahokee Deliverance Christian Center.
First lady, if you will. I'll be wanting up here. Let me make my photo look better. This first business is a business that does an outstanding job working with our youth as well as our young adults. We're so honored, on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission, Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Regina Bolden, Commissioner Bennett Everett III, Commissioner Felicia Hill, along with our city manager Chandler Williamson, and our entire city staff, to give us great pleasure to present this certificate in recognition of your outstanding work in this community. And as the vice mayor indicated, it's not only just businesses that provide food and clothing and other services, but businesses that work with our community. And we, we want to recognize you, and we want the community to know that you're here and the outstanding work and job that you do. So at this time, we'll have our Commissioner Bolden actually present this certificate to you. And after that, we will allow you to say a few words of introduction.
Okay, it says, Business of the Month. This certificate is awarded to Pahokee Deliverance Christian Center Incorporated of Pahokee, 168 East Fourth Street, Pahokee, Florida, 33476. In recognition of outstanding service to the community, presented this 11th day of June 2019, Keith W. Bab Jr., Regina Bolden, Felicia C. Hill, Clara M. Mervin, Benny L. Everett III, and Chandler F. Williamson. Congratulations.
And the first lady just recently opened a smoothie shop, Great Street. Her husband is always in the schools, working with our young school-age children. So we're just so delighted that we're able to recognize you at this time. I don't know if we have anybody from this. Oh, wow. Absolutely. Look at this sign. We're so pleased. Thank you all. Thank you all. I don't see official photographers here for the city, so we'll, we'll have the first lady say a few words on behalf.
Okay, yes. So first of all, we just want to say thank you to the City of Pahokee. We really appreciate you guys recognizing us. You know, it's great to, you know, see someone that sees your hard work and potential. We love working with the kids. Our job is to, you know, this is our future, our youth. And what we instilled in them now is what they're gonna have later on in the years. So thank you guys so much, and we really appreciate it.
And thank you so much for the, okay. I thank you. We'll have our next business come forward, our Balanced Living Mentorship Program. This young man and his group has no need for introduction. They are staple in our community. And if you keep up with social media, you'll probably have saw a lot of posters that they do. He take them out of the area to various schools and other activities. These young men are standing there. I just recently retired a little while back, and I'm committed to make sure I attend some of your session. I talked with our city manager, kind of slapped them on the wrist, but I know I've been slight. But now that I'm retired, I know that you meet on Wednesdays at 5:00. And you will see myself there on a regular basis. I think my brother, Bishop Bab, he'll attend sometime. So, I mean, we're really excited about this program and what you all do to influence the lives of our young men. And I believe now you're also working with the young ladies in addition to the men. And that's take a lot, you know, for someone to take the time to steer our children in the right direction. And he's a Christian, but as all Christians, we was all once a sinner, and this was a bad boy here one time. He don't, he don't want us to remember that. But boy, you talking to somebody that really turned his life around. And he didn't turn his life around and continue walking forward. He reaching back every day. So we're gonna just allow our Vice Mayor to kind of say a few additional words about this particular group. And before she do that, on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission, Commissioner Regina Bolden, Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Bennett Everett III, Commissioner Felicia Hill, along with our city manager and our entire city staff, man, we are so proud of you all, each of you all, each of you all. And thank you for everything you do.
Just to piggyback a little bit off what the mayor said, that was another reason that I chose this organization, because you see them in a community. And also, not And also, um, not only do they just talk it, but they live it. If you talk to some of these, um, these young men, you could tell that they have been in this, uh, group. They carry, their mannerism is very, is very up to par. And I appreciate it. I've been watching and that's why sometimes I will come and just sit out in the front there when y'all be inside. I'd be jealous sometime, I've been following it live. Ice, Hakeem, can I come? He told me no. But, but also, but I tell you, he's, he not only here, he takes them to football, he takes them to church. He take them, and he come all the way from Port St. Lucie back here to take these guys with him. So I, you know, I really appreciate it. And like I said, also, Anquan Bolden also is one of the, um, key players in this group also. So I say thank you. So the Business of the Month, this certificate is awarded to Balanced Living Mentorship in recognition of outstanding service to the community, presented this 11th day of June, 2019. The protocol's already been read, and I would like to say thank you.
Just want to say thank you to the city of Pahokee, to the Commissions, um, to the, uh, community people. Um, it's an honor, you know, to get noticed by your community. It should be just more than me up here, there's a lot of people behind the scenes, you know, that work hard, you know, that's dedicating their finances, their resources, their times, and more so, I'm proud of these kids. And we have a group of 70 or more kids every Wednesday. Uh, we're doing the Summer Enrichment Program, which is a credit recovery program that allowing the kids to come back and recover some credit grades, or even if they're in good standards, they're able to take electives with us in the program. And we just did a tour from Georgia to South Florida. And just to say, we had about, um, what, about six or seven scholarships offered? So that's an opportunity for kids to go to school, uh, for a ride for the parents. This young man right here, he's been in the program for a while and he just got his first opportunity, um, at University of Troy and University of Valdosta State. This young man right here, he's committed to FIU University, uh, FAU. This kid right here, just to, not to point him out, but this kid right here, he's been playing football for about three weeks. And right now, his mom and dad don't have to pay a dime for school. This young man right here, he don't need no introduction. He left me. He's up in Bradenton at ING Academy, $8,000 a year to go to school there. And he's one of the kids that was coming to go there. This young man right here, University of South Florida. And this young man right here, the next time we talk, he's gonna have some where to go to school. Um, just, it's just an honor to do.
Not only do we have a nice certificate, we got some trash money for the Lawn of the Month. And, uh, it's just an always a pleasure and an honor to recognize, uh, a resident who has the Lawn of the Month. Uh, not only does the lawn increase the particular resident, uh, value in their home, but it also kept their community value. That house is sold, your value now goes up depending on the selling value of that property. So we're, we're so happy. We're gonna ask, uh, Mr. Clinton Martin, I don't know what Sheila Martin, and, uh, Mr. Martin, I think they put several people on their check so you don't spend all the money yourself. If you would come up. We got Sheila Martin, Clinton Martin, and Helen Martin. I guess they all put a little, a green storm on that lawn. And you know, Mr. Clinton, you know, this cleanliness in this community, yes, spent over years. I remember when he just used to be, oh, just a volunteer on the, uh, on, on various boards. He get on us about the, the condition of the city. He argue too, but he put his efforts into cleaning up. So we, we're so proud of you, Mr. Martin, and we want to recognize you and your family. Uh, the Lawn of the Month is here pitched on our, uh, screen. I, I, I don't know who you got helping you, but we all may need to have them pitch in and help us with our lawn. So at this time, we're gonna have, uh, the, the Vice Mayor give the money and Commissioner Bowden give the certificate. So before they do that, Mr. Martin, on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission, Commissioner Regina Bowden, Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Bennett Everett, Commissioner Felicia Hill, along with our City Manager Chandler Williamson and myself as the mayor, and our entire city staff, man, we congratulate you for your hard work on this wonderful, beautiful lawn.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Let me read it. Says Lawn of the Month. This certificate is awarded to Sheila Martin, Clinton Martin, and Helen Martin. 1690 East Main Street, Pahokee, Florida. In recognition of beautifying the community, presented this 11th day of June, 2019. Keith Bab Jr., Regina Bowden, Felicia Hill, Clara Mervin, Benny L. Everett III, and Chandler Williamson. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Wait a minute, you gotta get your money. Wait a minute, you gotta get your money? You gotta get your money? But I don't think it's fair, they, they have the Sheila Martin on here, not your name. I don't think that's fair, is it?
Well, my name is on this.
Okay. Well, again, on behalf of the city of Pahokee, just to say, a token to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
We don't have one restriction that we ask that she spend some of that money in the city of Pahokee in some of these businesses here. Thank you.
It'll all be spent here, in Pahokee. I've been here in Pahokee since 1950. 1950. I came here in November of 1950. I've been here ever since. There's a nickel I made and it's spent, I've been right here. I thank all of you. Thank you very much.
We, we have one more on our presentation, the Public Private Partnership Project Green Tone.
Uh, yes, my name is William Dunston, D-U-N-S-T-O-N. And I am with a firm called Greentone N.A. LLC, Florida Corporation. Uh, we have a presentation, uh... There we go. Uh, I'm not gonna read a lot of this to you. It's a long presentation. I'm gonna try and run through this so that you can get out of here early enough. But we want you to understand why we're here tonight. Uh, obviously, you know what your name is supposed to be, but what is your future? What is Pahokee's future? Is it sugar? We drove in massive fields, obviously, a major part of your economy. But the economy is changing. And it's important that you understand that opportunity is knocking here for Pahokee. And one of the reasons we say this is because last year, the Farm Bill ended prohibitions in the United States on the growing of hemp and CBD oil. Uh, and this is an opportunity for the state of Florida, the city of Pahokee, to look at taking advantage of these new and emerging economic markets. Today, over 60% of the U.S. population lives in a state where marijuana is legal for medical purposes. One-third of the total population of the United States lives in an area where they can get recreational marijuana. Tax revenues have gone through the roof. Colorado did not expect the kind of money that has come in from these funds. Uh, in 2016, the, uh, sales grew by 30% and they're projected to reach $20.2 billion in, uh, 2021. I suspect it's gonna be even higher than that. Uh, Colorado pulled in in 2016, 200 million in revenue. And it was such a big amount of money that they did not expect it. It, it, it actually is opening up dialogues about things for free kindergartens, refunds to citizens for taxes, similar to what has happened in Alaska on the oil revenues. But this product is perfect for Pahokee. Uh, it's been used for thousands of years in building applications. Primarily, the difference between what you know as the psychoactive marijuana versus hemp is that marijuana has less, it has more than 0.03% THC. CBD has to have, or hemp has to have less than 0.03%. And that's what they're talking about growing here in Florida. And that's what the University of Florida has put out as a, as a encouragement for public-private partnerships in this area. Uh, again, the CBD and, uh, tetrahydrocannabinol is the two products that come out of marijuana or hemp. Again, they have both of the, of chemicals, but the reality is, one has a higher, uh, the psychoactive drug is the THC. Primarily, the way this got started was the people began to, uh, give, uh, responses that they, that they were experiencing relief from glaucoma. This is how the medical industry began to become aware of what could this drug do. Uh, and, and in reality, in the 1990s, they began figuring out exactly how it worked, which is that it is a, 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 a product of the endocannabinoid system, which is basically the creation of homeostasis in the body. And homeostasis is defined by the Encyclopedia Britannica as, as being the balance. And in essence, if, if you don't have balance in your body, and this is, this is what this drug does, is that it binds with the receptors. This is why people feel good with, with marijuana, because it binds with receptors in the body. And it basically causes the cells to operate on a balanced, uh, uh, platform. It allows the cells to operate functionally. And according to Encyclopedia Britannica, if you do not have homeostasis, if your homeostasis interrupted, if unsuccessful, you die. So where do they come from? Your body makes cannabinoids. This is why the, we're able to, the, the body is able to bind with these receptors. So this is what's happening, is that it's coming in, it's coming out now that they're making these products in the laboratory. But according to science, they have a thing called the entourage effect, which basically says that you can make these products in the laboratory, but it does not do the same as the total product, as a total plant does with the body. So what about the opioid crisis? We're all aware, and everyone, I am, I'm aware of people who have died from overdoses of opioids. And they're now finding that marijuana is a, and CBD is allowing these people to actually come off of cannabinoids or to use the, uh, or come off of the opioids and to be able to use cannabinoids in conjunction. So they're not having to take as much of the opioids. How did it all start? There was a little girl. Uh, most of you have heard of Charlotte's Web. Uh, well, this is Charlotte. And the funny, it's not funny, but the reality is, is that the, uh, the, the, the actual plant that they took this from, because it was so low in THC, was called Hippie's Disappointment. So the reality is, it's very high in CBD. The family was able to locate the oil, gave it to this little girl who was having over 300 seizures in a week. And the entire first week, she didn't have any seizures. So this tells you that there's something more here, that we have not been told the truth about this, this drug or this substance. What happens when CBD is used? I, I know you can't read this, but this is almost, you see articles in the paper now. It's almost like the old cowboy standing on the back of a wagon saying, this snowball was solved everything for you. But the reality is, it doesn't. It has some significant physiological effects on the human body. And the reality is, we don't know what all it does, because it's been a prohibitive substance for so long. Medical interest, uh, they have found that it actually, uh, does, uh, uh, help in brain concussions. It's an anti-inflammatory. Roger Goodell has even said, if they can figure out how it works and if it helps, he will not, uh, have a problem with players smoking marijuana. The American public supports legalization, and it is coming to Florida. Whether you realize it or not, it's coming. And the reality is, 84% of the public believes cannabis should be available for medical purposes. 61% of Americans support full legalization. In Pahokee, this was your, this was your amounts. This, these were the votes. 73.7% voted for medical marijuana. There was only two counties in the state of Florida that weren't in this same large category. And there were two northern Florida counties, uh, typical conservative counties, but they were above 50% in the vote. So that was the most opposition in the state of Florida. Hemp has been used for centuries as nautical. Uh, you know, you make canvas, it's from cannabis. It's made, it's made ropes, it's started wars, it's created problems. But in essence, one acre of hemp will produce as much as two to three acres of cotton. And it's a stronger fabric. Hemp was required to be grown in the early days of our country. George Washington grew it, Thomas Jefferson grew it, but every farmer was required to grow hemp. And it was because it was so necessary in farming and in nautical scenarios. Uh, hemp was found, uh, approximately 2,700 years ago in a shaman's grave, two pounds of hemp. It's been around and used medicinally for centuries. Most of you don't realize, but the reality is, when Napoleon started his war and went to Moscow to fight the Russians, it was over marijuana. He found the Russians where, the Russians had been growing hemp for centuries. They created all the canvas sails, all of the ropes, all of these countries. If you had a navy, you had to have hemp. And so the reality was, is that Napoleon had told the French, if you sell hemp to the, or if you sell rope or seeds to the English, we're gonna fight. And he found that the Russians were selling it underground to the Ru, to the British, and that started the War of 1812. And that called it, and that was Napoleon's Waterloo. But a lot of people don't realize it was fought over marijuana. Hemp's history goes way back. You can't read this, but the reality is, it's been demonized for years. And minority populations and Mexican populations, jazz fans, were all afflicted by this gentleman. Harry Anslinger. He was the first narcotics commissioner. And when the prohibition on alcohol ended at the end of the tw- twenties, uh, he had to find a new substance to be against, because he was gonna lose his job. And he focused on marijuana. And these are the kind of statements that he made. And I, it's very racist, and the reality is, is that everyone should understand marijuana has been, uh, treated very badly in this country when it has been legal for years. Most people don't realize that it was in everyone's, uh, uh, medicine cabinet in the 30s. Nearly every product has some sort of hemp derivative in it, and then they made it illegal. And part of that illegal, uh, part of that action to make it illegal was, was, uh, Standard Oil, Rockefellers, who did not like the competition that hemp was bringing into the system, and, uh, William Randolph Hearst in California, who basically wa, was attacking the Mexicans because they were coming into the country. who basically was attacking the Mexicans, because they were coming into the country. And they changed the name from cannabis to marijuana to make it sound more Mexican. So you've all familiar with Reefer Madness. This was some of the propaganda that was put out that basically said, if you smoke this, you're going to go crazy, you're going to become a schizophrenic mass murderer. Louis Armstrong. If you don't know it, Louis Armstrong loved marijuana. It was his way of keeping his calmness on the stage. And he basically, he basically tried to get a license years ago so he could travel freely with it. His wife was eventually arrested in Hawaii over it. But he was very strongly supportive of the legalization. Henry Ford, nineteen forty-one, produced the first all-hemp vehicle that ran on hemp. It's stronger than steel. Hemp in its applications, you can make hempcrete, you can make hemp insulation, and you can make particle board in the building industry with this product. It's a simple mix. If you make concrete, you understand how it works. But in essence, the way hempcrete works is a ratio of four, one, one. Four parts hemp herd. Herd is just a wooden stalk from the inside of the plant. It's been ground up. You mix that with one part lime, one part water. That's all it is. And it makes, after fifty years, it becomes solid stone. Great insulator, it's anti-microbial because of the lime. And there was, if you watch the internet on this, there was one gentleman that was talking about building these houses, and he built forty-six houses of hemp. And only one needed air conditioning. So it's an insulator. For every inch of hempcrete, it gives you two point one R factor. So it's a tremendous insulator. We want you to take advantage of this. We know there's been people that have come to town and talked about things that they think are going to work here. We have something that we believe will work, and we have the money behind it. We are encouraging you to consider the fact of what is going to happen. And full legalization is coming to Florida, whether it comes by 2020, 2024. It's coming to Florida. Everything that, as you know, everything that happens in California happens in Florida. So it's coming here. And the smartest thing you can do is to look at, well, how can we take advantage of this? Nothing against the sugar industry. Love the sugar industry. But the reality is, when the Castros are gone and Cuba opens up like they will, they're going to start selling sugar to the United States. And what's happening here is not going to be as big and great as you once had it. And one of the things you can do is to look at the future and diversify and put yourself right in the middle of the new great emerging market. One of the concerns, and it's really, you know, we don't know where it all comes from, but the big fight is going to be against the sugar industry, the blue-green algae and the red tide. These things are, whether people believe it or not, it's what they believe. And the truth is what the people believe. And they believe the sugar industry has caused a lot of this. Golf courses, major development, anything that gets into the streams, goes down the rivers, it creates dead zones. One of the largest dead zones in the world is in the Gulf of Mexico. And they're projecting it's going to be, typically, it's five thousand square miles. But this year, they're saying it's going to be eight thousand square miles. And what happens is, when phosphates and fertilizers go into the water, go down the river into the ocean, it settles at the bottom and takes out all the oxygen. And that's what kills all the fish, and you have this tremendous dead zone in the Gulf of Mexico. We're talking about putting in a facility. We know that there's properties here, we know that there's capabilities here, but we're looking at having a workforce job training program to train the local people here on how the industry works, how you can become involved in the industry, how can you move to another state or even Canada and still be involved in the industry, because you're going to learn it here in Pahokee. And there's all types of job opportunities. One of the biggest things that the industry is missing right now is packaging. So even if you don't get into the real industry, there's lots of side industries that can develop from this sort of thing. And the housing we're talking about building is, would be in conjunction with those people that are selected for the job training programs. And in essence, we don't have the raw materials yet to start the project. But ideally, what we would like is to, as we begin to ramp up, is to begin teaching these people how to build hempcrete houses that they or others are going to live in down the road. So this is a way that can become a state model, it can become a national model. I know of no other place that this kind of offer has been put out in the United States. And again, we're talking about building hempcrete-type houses and teach the people how. This is a new industry. You've got, I'm sure there's going to be many people in the concrete industry that are going to be interested in this. But this is a different kind of industry. And if you will just do the studies on hempcrete, you're going to be shocked at how fascinating it is. Shipping, this is a perfect location. Pahokee's a perfect location for the port of Palm Beach. Once, the big problem that you have when you start growing hemp is that it's a very difficult product to process. You can grow it, it's expensive. It costs a dollar a seed. Costs six thousand seeds to plant an acre. So farmers don't want to spend that kind of money unless they know they've sold their product before it's ever grown. So we're talking about having a processing facility here in Pahokee. Not just growing it here, but having a processing facility. Most of you remember the way cotton was milled in the South. Farmers couldn't milled their own cotton, they had to take it to a gin. They sewed it at the gin, the gin owner milled the cotton. Same thing is going to happen here. You're going to create a cooperative where you have these farmers that are members of this cooperative, and they're going to guarantee a certain amount of production that's going to come to this facility. And then this facility is going to mill the raw materials into products that can then be shipped out either by rail, which you have spurs here, or by the port. The islands that are looking for hemp products, maybe they can grow it, they can process it. So they ship it over here for processing. There's a number of things that can happen here that would be tremendously beneficial for Pahokee if they stepped up and said, we want to be first, we want to be a part of this. Employment, obviously, there will be the dispensaries. We're going to try to teach all aspects laterally, up the ladder, every aspect of how this industry works to the people that are involved in this employment program. Access, we have access to resources, University of Florida, FAMU, a lot of people like FSU. But right now, University of Florida is the big dog in this. So they have a grow going on right now in Homestead. And we're going to be talking to them if you decide that you want to move forward with this project. In preparation for this, you can see, some schools, this is SUNY University in New York, Morrisville, they have degrees now in cannabis cultivation. They're preparing their students, they're preparing their people for this industry. Right now, I'm unaware of anything that's going on other than the hemp workshop in three locations around June twenty-six, something like that. But the reality is, we have to, we have to train our people. We have to have people involved in this industry. Florida's going to be tremendously large in this industry. Hemp cannot have, outdoor hemp, you can't make it into medicinal marijuana. You can't make it into CBD. You can't have pesticides in it, you can't have overhead spraying from another field. The reality is, the outdoor grows are basically to provide the raw products, the herd, the shield, whichever the wood is for the hempcrete, the outside bark, which is where they get the fiber, and then the seeds and the flowers, which is used for whatever they can process it into. But in essence, real, true medicinal marijuana cannot have pesticides or any other contaminants in it. And that's one of the other things that we're talking about for Pahokee, is looking at putting in a lab here for the certification and determination of how pure the product is. It doesn't exist in Florida right now.
Mr. Don, excuse me. I know we are on a timeframe here, I'm not going to cut you off. I want to give the mayor and the commission an opportunity to ask a couple of questions.
Sure. Yeah, no, go ahead. If I've expressed where we are right now, we're talking about having a grow facility, we're talking about having a processing facility, and we're talking about having a lab environment. And what we need is the support of the community of Pahokee, the commission, in order to convince the state of Florida, they need to be involved in trading off land for this facility. I think there's a thirty-two acre parcel of land that's being looked at by the cabinet sometime later this month. I don't know exactly where that is. But the reality is, we have this company in Canada, it's called Greentown. We have established ourselves here in Florida. We're going to do this. We would like to do it here. And because of the limitations of time, I will be here afterwards to answer any questions that anyone has. But the bottom line on this is, this is an opportunity. And we are standing here with a commitment of approximately fifty million dollars to start. So the reality is, I will step back, and if any questions I can answer.
Potential jobs creation, you got any limit or early estimates? How many jobs this would create for the community?
It's going to be difficult to determine how many jobs will be created initially, because, as you know, you have more jobs in the construction phase than you do when you have. But the reality is, this is going to be a full security facility. So there will be jobs for security, construction, agriculture, development, processing. At this particular point, we know how they did it in Canada. We know how we can do it here. What we have to find out is whether or not you want it.
Yeah, I had a question. I was listening to his presentation, and he mentioned Canada a couple of times, the industry he has. What is the amount of money that you put into the industry in Canada that's for today? What is the amount of investment in dollars that you put into the company in Canada?
Marier, M-A-R-I-E-R.
We have invested fifty million dollars at this time. And we are a greenhouse, which is two hundred fifty thousand square foot.
Could you come to the podium so we can capture that, please? Thank you.
So thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. So we have invested fifty million dollars at this time. We have the major or the larger greenhouse being built, it's completely built. It's fully automated. And we foresee, this is two hundred fifty thousand square foot, and we have already secured lands to build three more like this. So you can imagine the market. The market is huge, there's a lack of offer, the demand is so strong in Canada. So we have to provide more facilities, more expansion for to supply the demand.
We can use Canada as a case study. Have crime in that area where this has been developed, has a decrease, increase, been about the same?
Yes. Well, you see, Canada, the, my people over there, we will use all their technology, all their knowledge about it. This is what we want to bring in here, the expertise that they have so far. They're not going, we're not going to bring the people to do the job here, we'll bring the people from here to do it. But we'll have the expertise to teach exactly how things should be done and to be, you know, respecting all the rules.
Okay, my question to you, though, have crime increased in that area, increased or decreased? Or did you see any change in it? You know, you can get some type of industry that could create some additional crime, or because of the job and economic benefit, it could have a decrease on crime. I'm not sure if you understand the question, Commissioner.
Has the crime decreased or increased?
Okay, okay, look at me. Okay, well, our prime minister is convinced that's going to solve the problem of crime. This is why, maybe the major or the main reason why he legalized the marijuana. He's convinced about it. It's all a matter, there's a strategy to take there. If we have the same, we have the problem with cigarettes in Canada, you know? And with illegal cigarettes from people. If the price is so high, when it's legal, people would have tendency to go and buy on the street to get the same product or almost the same product, probably not the same quality of product, at a lower price, you know? So the strategy is to give the product at a competing price to the black market or the street market. And this is in Canada now. It's, the access is so easy to have the product. The product is certified by the government. So people are sure they're buying a good product, which has been tested, and the price is competitive. I don't have numbers, and I'm not going to throw any numbers that I'm not sure of. But we're pretty sure that it's going to completely decrease or kill the black market on it. Because the access is easy, everybody can buy it next door. You know, the distribution has been organized so that everyone in any region can have access to the product. So I'm pretty sure, numbers will come, because it's only been legalized. We're just talking about, not even a year at this time. But after a year or so, I'm pretty sure that we'll have numbers and that will kill the black market, you know?
But my question, if it kills it, but this is just medical marijuana, correct? This is not recreational marijuana, so...
Yeah, it is recreational in Canada.
In Canada, it's recreational, you say?
Recreational and medical, okay?
Okay.
It is recreational.
Let me add one thing to this. Part of the problem that they're experiencing now, because politicians, nothing's here, but politicians got greedy. When they realized they were legalizing marijuana, they taxed it as much as they could, all the way up, over the black market. So people that were able to go in and buy it at the store for the first time realized they were paying ten, twenty percent more for it than what they could buy it on the street. So the next time they buy it, they buy it on the street. The way you get rid of or kill crime is you don't overtax the product, you keep it artificially low. So you run out all of the dealers, and the police don't lose their jobs. They're still looking for people growing that it's illegal, people that are selling that is illegal. But the reality is, part of this problem has been put at the foot of the elected officials who got very excited about this tax money, which you can see what we showed was the amount. Two hundred million just for Colorado. They did not expect it. They ran out of product. Canada ran out of product, evidently.
We had a problem with this at the beginning. There were lineup, lineup, and people waiting to get, you know, to buy some of the product. And there was not enough product on the market.
About how long would it take to, how long does it take to grow it? How long would it take to build your building, your lab?
You know, we were here, and we want to start very, as soon as possible, as soon as possible. Because time is of essence at this time. We believe that hemp will be legalized matter of weeks, maybe, or months, no later than that. Probably July, maybe, maybe after, but very soon. So we got to get right away, I mean, into a deal, I call it a deal, with the city of Pahokee so that we could work together, we're partners, this is what we look for, a partnership, a joint venture, to benefit, to get benefits to the city. And we have to start as soon as possible, and probably will be starting growing as soon as it legalized. as it's legalized. We'll go for the licensing, and we'll start right away. But meanwhile, there's some preparation to do. We got to train people. We got to find, you know, the equipment, or do the deal with the local people that already are growing, you know, some. So we have a start. Time is of essence. We don't want to be behind and having the other people starting before us. We'd like to be a leader in the industry, and that's a way to go. But first, we have to sit down with the city of Pahokee and make some kind of a good agreement, good agreement, both for both of us, and benefits, give benefits to the people of Pahokee. I've been around Pahokee a few times now, and I think there's a lot of things to do. And that may be a way to do it, and do it fast. Because we're ready to move. You know, I left Montreal yesterday. I'm here, and if I have to come back tomorrow, I'll be here tomorrow, or, you know, we're ready. So we think Pahokee is the right place to do it, and we're anticipating sitting down with you and talking business.
Does it take the, like, the, I don't know, the governor or somebody to approve the site, or is it just you, you make it arrange?
It's going to take the cabinet. It's going to take a land swap. It's going to take something. This is state land. It's 32 acres. It's state land, and the cabinet is going to have to transfer it. I don't know. Maybe the city of Pahokee's already requested that transfer. But the reality is, I understood that this was before the cabinet.
Okay, also, this is where you're building a plant and housing together?
Yeah, we're, the processing of the machinery for the facility, the machines themselves also are $1 million. So you're going to have to have several processing machines for this, assuming that we're going to be getting the majority of the hemp in this side of the state. I mean, it could be, this becomes so successful that we put in another facility somewhere else in the state. But I know that in Alabama, where they have 180 permits that they've just given out for hemp production, they're having to ship their production to either Memphis or Nashville for processing. So you can imagine that you are in the spot that if someone's willing to put a processing facility in here, you've got the great opportunity to be a hub of this industry for Florida.
What cities in Alabama?
It's scattered all over the state. The one that I'm familiar with is up in the Gadsden and Tallahassee area. And I can give you the name of a guy that has the permit as you like. But they have, their permitting processes there allow you, if you have the permit, to have satellite sites. You don't have to grow everything in one spot. You can under that permit, permit another farmer to grow for it. But the big problem for additional marijuana in America right now is that there's, with Illinois, Illinois is going to be the 11th state for recreational, and it will probably January 1, they're going to open it up. They're probably the one state that has done it right. The other states have had different issues that has caused problems in those states. They try to, the biggest problem across the board for all the states is homegrown. Some states don't let you grow it at home. Some states let you grow up to six plants. But the reality is, those were the sticking points that caused problems. Illinois is doing, what they are doing is they're legalizing it. They're letting people have X amount per day. They're not saying where you have to get it. They're taking everyone that had marijuana-related criminal offenses, and they're expunging their records. And they're putting out a low-interest loan program where people who have lived in communities that have been traditionally high-crime, high-arrest area for marijuana crimes, they're giving them low-interest loans in which they can now open a marijuana-related business. This is Illinois.
So this is the kind of plan?
This is the facility, this is the type of facility that we're talking about, totally enclosed, totally secured. It's one of those facilities that you have to go through a safe clean room, and then put on frocks and masks and that sort of thing. Because if you're going to be growing medical marijuana, you want it as pure as you can. And the facilities they have in Canada are mechanized. So just because someone says you're going to have a mechanized facility, doesn't mean you don't need people that know how to fix the mechanisms. So we're going to be doing all of these things for the people here that are in the program. Right? You're correct?
Okay, too, due to time restraints, I know we just heard the presentation tonight, but if the commissioner sees a desire to at least have staff continue to work with this group to explore this possibility, of course, our city attorney needs to get involved. There's going to be a contractual agreement. If it's feasible, you know, if we want to direct them to continue exploring and looking into it, we're not making a commitment tonight, but at least give in staff authorization to continue to explore the possibility.
So move on that, Mayor, but I just had one question. With the housing, though, you were saying with this, on that, you said the housing would be for the employers, but what about?
No, we're talking about the housing being for the workers.
You're going to say just for the workers?
For the workers.
So what about housing? Because what we're looking here in the city of Pahokee is for workforce housing, period four hours, citizens, and just, not just for...
I understand you're looking for single-family type housing.
Yes.
And that is still on the board. But what we'd like to do is, as we go into this, because we're trying to get your approval to move forward. We can tell you all the things that we would like to do, but until we know you want to do it, we can't solidify any. All we can do is, if you say no, is we got a good preparation for the next seat. That's basically what it amounts. But the reality is, we are here. All we need is the approval to move forward, and we will continue to have a dialogue moving forward. Am I correct? I'm going to go to the other side.
So, Mayor, your motion was, I was going to say, what's the motion?
The recommendation was to move to allow staff to continue exploring the possibility of getting this deal put together, at least at a point where it can be presented to the commission for approval and consideration.
So move on that, Mayor.
Second.
And I don't know if there's a language need to be a little more...
Well, I just want to make sure, Mr. Mayor, we are clear on what the directive is. And so would you like for us to find out what the, what needs, what would need to happen in order for something like this to happen legally? What impediments might be in place from the state right now that the city would have to contend with? Is that sort of what you're asking for, as opposed to directing us to go down a path to, so as I understand it, you would be asking us to research the issue, come back with, this is what the lay of the law, lay of the law is, and these are the things that would have to be done in order for this to happen, but not to enter into any kind of negotiations or anything like that? Okay, got it. Thank you.
Wouldn't, don't we probably then, once they do that, need like some kind of workshop so that they can come, and we can ask a bunch of questions? Because I don't know about anybody else, but I got about 1,000 questions. Y'all know me, I know all sorts of questions.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
But ideally, what we need to be on the same page about is if the cabinet is looking at this, I think it would be beneficial for them to know you like this idea, and you're talking about a public-private partnership here for that purpose. I mean, it may move the issue forward a little faster if they know you're behind it, you're supportive of it. That's all we say.
And, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I think that would be premature at this point, without enough information, and allowing us to actually come back so that you can make that decision based upon the information that we are able to gather.
Mayor, you and you have been at Florida leading city conferences, and we've talked about marijuana and hemp. Probably for the last two years, we've been through those conversations. You know, did a little research, and, you know, the hemp industry, you know, is projected to be a multi-billion dollar operation here, you know, across America. In Florida alone, it's going to be, you know, billions of dollars made on this production. I do know, just by some recent research, that they're, they're probably, it's imminent that they're going to pass some legislation to ensure that the operations are here in the state of Florida at some type of rate. And the agriculture commissioner, now that he, you know, brought this conversation up, you know, they're sort of like scrambling now, because there's so much information they have to get out, so many, so many regulations they have to put in place, operation for the facility, the security, et cetera, along with the policies of, is it going to be from, you know, medicinal, recreational, medical? We know about medical marijuana. It comes in all types of forms. You can smoke it. You can put it on your skin in an oil. It comes in multiple forms. So that tells you what type of industry this is across the nation. I agree with the city attorney, you know, we need to dig in and do our research and bring something back to the commission that you can make a decision on. Commissioner Bowden made a good idea that we need to have another conversation or workshop so we can get all of our questions answered moving forward, so we can make some type of decision. They mentioned this property that we've already have in movement in Tallahassee currently. And so we've had groups that have come before us and have presented, you know, the opportunity for the development for housing. So there's a lot of conversations you're going to have to consider, you know, moving forward on this piece of property here for the city of Pahokee. We need housing here in the city of Pahokee. That's very obvious. We also need economic development here in the city of Pahokee, and that's very obvious. So we would have to go back and really, you know, assess what this company is offering. I do know it's a multi-billion dollar operation across this nation. In small cities who allow corporations to come in like this, their infrastructure has been paid for. They no longer go to the state for grants, because they're generating so much revenue, you know, back to the city, that their infrastructure is self-built, just on that revenue alone that's coming back to the city. I'm not saying that's swaying me. I'm just saying the industry for this type of operation is endless right now, and I don't know everything about it. And that's something that we have to research and dig into and come back and present to the commission again. Because again, you had other groups that have come in here, made presentations about this particular area of Pahokee, and it's centered around housing. And so we have to consider, you know, those groups, because they came in, you know, before this group, making some recommendations as well. So that's my spinoff.
I would add one more thing, which is that in a lot of instances, when you're getting involved in a new enterprise, you have a tremendous learning curve. Lot of expense, lot of trouble, lot of mistakes. We've got people that have already been through that, that already know how to avoid those kind of issues. So the reality is, you've got a company in Canada that has been through this. We won't have that same type of learning curve that some cities will.
What's the name of the company in Canada?
Green, Greentown.
It's the same Greentown?
Yeah, but we incorporated, we have incorporated Greentown, N-A-L-C.
Do you have operations here in the state of Florida?
We are, yes, we are in real estate also, and we have bought some properties in Fort Lauderdale, and big, big properties over there. We bought properties in Allendale, Fort Lauderdale, and we're just in the process of closing a property on Singer Island. So, and these are major properties.
Would this be your first operations in the state, if it's in Pahokee?
Yes.
Yeah, cameras.
Yeah.
Are you in any other states?
No, no, no. We concentrate here.
Okay.
You know, we put our energy in Florida, and this is where we want to be, and we're doing the right thing to do it.
I'm sorry. What would be your upfront investment, again?
Well, here? Well, it'd be major at the end of it, you know, because as you can see, just by the picture there, this, this greenhouse costs 40, just the construction costs $40 million just for the greenhouse. We're not talking about the lab. We're not talking about the processing, just for the greenhouse. So that's major. Of course, we'll have to start with a budget, probably 15 to 20 million dollars, something like that. We'll have to establish this together and make things happen as...
But as things happen, you're going to have more and more people wanting to contribute, to be involved. You're going to have more agencies within the state that are going to see this as a pilot project, and they're going to be interested in throwing in their support, depending upon how it's structured.
So we have a motion. Did we get a second? Regent, if you said, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so we would allow staff to kind of continue to move forward and do whatever needs to do to bring this more closer to us, so we can make a more informed decision.
The motion needs to be like, maybe a little bit more succinct. What, what are we doing? I mean, are we just exploring it, and then they're saying, you know, they need an answer pretty quick? I don't like to be rushed. Y'all know that.
No, we're not trying to put pressure.
No, no, I understand. But I'm saying, so are y'all going to research it and bring it back to us like in two weeks for a workshop, and then after that, we can make some decisions?
I would, I would like for us to be able to look into it at all right now. I do know what the status was several months ago, and I'm not sure what has happened since that time with the state. So I can't say that, you know, I will be fully prepared in a week or two, but certainly I will try. And I'll work with the manager to get whatever information, including maybe other speakers to come in and talk about what's happening, maybe someone from the state to tell you what, you know, what the status might be in terms of what their process is, whether it is a staff person or a legislator, or, you know, maybe we can get some people who have expertise in the area and bring those folks back, along with information. We'll certainly try to put together something that will allow you to be informed, and that's my goal, anyway. In terms of legal, the legal issues, I'm sure the manager will have some other issues that he will want to address, in terms of economic development, perhaps, and what, what this could realistically yield in terms of benefits for the city. But I think that, you know, I would hate for you to say, you know, come back at the next meeting or something, because I don't know that I'm going to have that information at the next meeting, and I don't know what their deadline is. But we'll certainly try to do everything that we can to have you have considered information and be informed.
May I add that through the partnership, we will go through that process. We'll bring our own expertise, people that knows about it legally and technically about this, that we'll live the process together. The partnership for us is being on the same, on the same page at the same time. So if we are going to go together, well, we'll get an agreement, of course, but through this process there, you'll have a chance to see, maybe some people will come to Canada and visit what we're doing there and get knowledge about it. So this is, this will be included in the process. We'll be partners.
And, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I just want to be very clear, that the city is not talking at this point about a partnership, at least that's not what I've heard. And so we will be getting the information, because whatever happens in Canada, you all realize, we have state of Florida laws to contend with, including whatever laws the state, I mean, the federal government may have that may pertain to this. And so we want to certainly have, you know, good information for you that, and I don't want to mislead or have, go out of here and someone says, the next meeting, I thought it was a partnership. We're not talking partnership at this point. So we're just researching the information to bring back to you so that you all can consider the issue. That's, that's all I understand the motion to be in. So if somebody wants to make that motion, that's what we'll do.
And that is the motion of city attorney, is just to, because you know, we have two commissioners out also, so you want to give them a chance also to look this over. So the motion is just for you to do research on to, because like you said, the state timing is not our timing, so we cannot make the state move as fast as they move. So it's just our research right... right now, just to, just to research the, the information, bring it back as soon, as quick as that, that you have that information.
Very good. I guess I would like to also, in that, I would like to know, yeah, y'all can give me all the information you want about this, and how it grows, and where it grows, and all of that, but at the end of the day, I'd wanna know, how's the city benefit out of this? That would be my big, probably decision maker.
Yeah, I, I mean, from Ms. Weeks' perspective, she's looking at it from a legal point of view, as far as the sufficiency of it, and as she mentioned, I'm gonna be looking at the benefits for the city of Pahokee, that would be my part, as far as economic development, the residual revenue fallout to the city of Pahokee, and we, we should be able to bring that back, you know, again, we won't have-
And so that's, that's some of what we would be discussing in the workshop.
That'll be part of the research.
You need to have a workshop.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, I'm okay with that then.
Okay, so the clerk is asking me if you can please amend the motion to limit it to allowing us to go out and research the issue and bring back for consideration at a workshop.
So, the motion is to go out and research the information to bring back to the workshop on the Green Tom organization?
Well, well, on the issue of-
On the issue of-
Growing-
Growing hemp oil.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and, I mean, we need somebody to vet them, not that y'all don't look nice, you know, but.
Where do we get the vet? Like, would be, be they, or somebody like that? I think that would be premature at this point, because, I mean, maybe it requires an RFP, maybe it requires, you know, you, I think we're researching just the issue, and so we're gonna bring that back to you, so it-
Right now, we just want research information.
As opposed, right, as opposed to this particular entity, you're researching the into it, it may, it may be, be that you, this entity is a fine entity, and you decide that, or it may be that there, you find that, you know, there, you want to consider other people who may have an economic development plan, that may, they may have to commit to before you go forward, I mean, there can be another, a lot of different things that you can do, but I think the, the first thing that I understood you all to say, is that you want us to research the issue, and so the motion's been made, and if there's a second to that motion, then, you know, the mayor will take it from there.
Yes, that was the motion, I think Regina, second.
So, it has been moved-
I think that's got it straight now.
Vice Mayor Mervin, and properly second by Commissioner Bowden, that we allow staff to research this issue and bring back significant information that we can use in a workshop to determine our next step as far as moving forward.
Yes.
Call for questions? Here in nine, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
May I?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all. Motion passes by three oh vote, I believe Commissioner Everett has lost contact.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question for the attorney? As you develop your questions, if you could submit, just email them to us, so our responses may help you in your research, we may be able to answer questions much faster if we know about them all, as soon as we know about them.
We appreciate, we appreciate the-
We're more than, just as you develop it, send it to us, let us respond to it, and then you have a better product to present.
If we have questions, we will definitely reach out, thank you.
Can you leave your contact information for you?
Sure.
In the meeting, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Okay, we're gonna move right on into the mayor's report, it will be brief, we're gonna try to get you out of here in a few minutes, y'all. The mayor and the city of Pahokee will be hosting a council awareness event on July the 20th, that's a slide at ten o'clock here at the old high school cafeteria, there are some flyers on their back, I would ask you all to take some of these, give them out, especially to the females, there's a eligibility step, they need to call this number and get eligible for the breast screening, mammogram, there are gonna be a mobile here on site, there are also gonna be some council education, we wanna make this a great event for the city of Pahokee, so if you can help us spread the word. To bring this vehicle here, we need a minimum of fifteen to twenty participant, we think we're gonna do a lot better than that, but without the community's support, or it won't be as successful as we would like it to be. Also wanna thank the city manager for his speedy follow-up with the retailers that we spoke to in Las Vegas, every single retailer was followed up with a letter thanking them for their time, that they invested in hearing our presentation. Hopefully, we can get some businesses through that particular follow-up. In addition to that, in August, there are gonna be another retail convention in Orlando that I, as the mayor, will be considering going, we already have the packages and the presentation, and now we're gonna perfect that presentation, there were a lot of retailers that were excited about the presentation that we provided on behalf of the city, so we're looking forward to the possibility of expanding our outreach to a, like, additional retailers to our community. And I guess at that point, I'll conclude the mayor's report, we'll now move to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks for bringing up the ICSC conference, got some conversations back on that, yeah, the ICSC conference is, is the major national retail conference here in America, it provides an opportunity for actually retail, real estate firms, major retailers themselves to converge in one specific, you know, city and discuss, you know, future development across the United States. What is significant about that is probably every restaurant franchise that you've ever walked into were there as well, along with all the major retail corporations that recruit retail to come to cities. You also had, you know, hundreds of cities there as well, with their own booths, trying to recruit retailers that come to their cities, and so it's very beneficial that we had an opportunity to sit down with some of the major retail recruitment firms in the nation, and, and listen to what it takes to bring business to, to, to a city, or a small town, or a community. We had an opportunity to sit down with several retail recruitment firms, face to face, specifically for Pahokee, and have a conversation about, you know, coming to the city of Pahokee, or assisting in luring retail development here to the city of Pahokee. I learned something that most cities are doing that we're not doing, is they hire these retail recruitment firms to work on their behalf, to promote their cities, and so that's something that we're gonna look at very closely here. We actually got one, I think, response, Mayor, from one retail recruitment firm that is interested in working on our behalf, of course, the numbers weren't, well, I expected them to be, but they're very interested in helping assist the city of Pahokee in bringing new restaurants, businesses to the city of Pahokee, that's their expertise in what they do, so we're excited about that. Both, all of the firms that we met with have responded back, some have offered actually packages and promotional materials that they can provide to assist, of course, that comes with, you know, a cost, you know, when you hire a retail development firm, they're not coming for free, but they will provide you a type of service that you typically would see in larger cities, or any city that can afford their, 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 their product, and that's recruitment of retail businesses, so we learned a lot. I think I took over sixty thumb drive presentations to this conference, I came back with four, four, so I had an opportunity to speak, you know, to numerous retail developers, if, if you walked into a restaurant, I probably talked to that retail, that, that, that company or that restaurant, wherever you eat here in Palm Beach County, I assure you, I, I had a conversation with them, and that's every restaurant, I started a specialty restaurants, I'm talking about McDonald's, the Dairy Queens, the Longhorns, the Golden Corral's, even Walmart, you know, we had fluid conversations with these corporations about the city of Pahokee, and every last one of them received a presentation on, on the city of Pahokee, so we're just gonna take some continued follow-up, and, and to, you know, engage that interest and, and keep that interest, you know, steady and, and focus on Pahokee. And of course, everything that we're doing here in the city of Pahokee aids in that recruitment as well, our renovations at the marina, our subleasing, housing, all of those things are a conversation that we have with retail developers to promote the city of Pahokee. One particular organization, and it's a national organization, that promotes your actual land that you own, and Mayor, you walked over at that presentation that I was at, where they take your land that you own, and they put it on a national rolodex, as you could say, and it exposes it to the nation, where major retail developers are continuing to search their website for available land for economic development. That was significant, because it provided me an opportunity to look at all the land that we own, and promote it, you know, nationally, and they had these different packages, and it started at maybe a hundred and fifty bucks for an average package, to a gold package, to about three hundred month, three hundred dollars a month, to promote your, your property to, to a national audience. And that was important, because right now, we know we have some properties out there that we can promote nationally to lure, you know, economic development and major retailers to at least review and look at, so, very beneficial conference, certainly learned a lot, I told the mayor, I said, we probably should've been here three years ago, but it took going to another national conference to learn about this retail conference, and so, when the conversation comes up, what do we learn when we go to these conferences? I didn't know about ICSC until I went to a conference that we participate in every year, and I had other cities tell me what they did to recruit retail and economic development to their cities, so, you know, that's how we got to this conference, and that's why, you know, I'm excited about it, because we made so many more new contacts about the city of Pahokee, and now that that presentation there is, is, is electronic, we can send that out and do follow-up with other folks that we probably missed, I think I have over a hundred and fifty business cards that I'm still filtering through, and having those conversations and email, back and forth, and phone conversations, so, we, we wanna, you know, attract at least one from this conference, and we, and we think we have an interest of one particular group, but we don't wanna talk about it, because it's an ongoing conversation, but it's gonna get to a point where if we want to look at hiring a retail developer to assist the city, you know, we'll bring that, that presentation forward for your consideration, but right now, we're, we're just doing a lot of follow-up with a lot of these organizations and entities from that conference over the last two weeks. I think I mentioned the July 4 fireworks, commission typically around this year, there's a summer vacation for the commission, you need to, you know, consider some dates in this, in this summer, typically it's, it's around July, you take one or two commission meetings off, that doesn't delete out that we have budget meetings that we'll have, and maybe a, a town hall as well, but it's, it's your pleasure if you wanna do that for the month of July, and, and continue with the meeting that we already have scheduled for, as far as the budget meeting, so you need to consider that. Lastly, we need to close out our former legal firm's contract on the books, we have their last invoice remaining, we need a motion to go ahead and, and close out that agreement with that former legal firm this evening, so finance can move forward and pay your, pay the former legal firm for the contract that they had.
We're, we're in a chain of motion, but we need a specific amount, that's, that's for the record, I think it's two months, and it's an equal amount of, of payment, or a total of-
Fifteen, three, three, four, fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
That's a total amount?
Yes, sir.
So, that's an average of what, seven thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's the remaining two months.
Right. Commissioner, it's your pleasure, we have a final obligation to our previous city attorney, according to his calculation, his contract calls for a two-month servant pay if his contract is terminated, so that's a total of fifteen thousand and seven dollars, that we'll exit after that, you can go ahead and figure it out.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the invoices that was given here by Mr. Gary Brandenbergh, of fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
As a final payment.
As a final payment.
Do you have a second on that?
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin, and properly second by Commissioner Bowden, that we authorize staff, our financial department to, to disburse the funds necessary for the final closeout of our previous city attorney's salary that's due to him. Call for questions?
Yeah, I have some. Do we have an invoice that says this amount from Mr. Brandenbergh?
Yeah, I was, I thought I printed it out, he emailed it to me, and I thought it was in here with the contract, it's not, it's not attached to the contract.
I'm looking at one, cause I think Mr. Brandenbergh also put one out there.
He emailed it to all of us.
Yeah, he did himself.
He emailed it to all of us, I think, April 24th.
GGS Net, we get you official copy, would you let her look at that?
This says the total amount due is twenty-one thousand, two sixty-nine-nine.
Correct, that's minus, that's minus, Commissioner, that's minus the April, that's already been paid out.
That's minus April, that's already been paid out, is that what you said?
Here it is, right here, twenty-six, also, five thousand, eight, seven, eighty-one was paid already. And those invoices, and so don't be no any misinformation, those came from Mr. Brandenbergh himself.
It doesn't make sense to me, maybe I'm just not reading it correctly. And those are the total that he, yeah, but I, I just, I don't see where anything's been paid on here, he said something had been paid.
Yeah, well, we, we don't have his council check, but April, when he sent this out, it was April, May, June, and then, April payment went out, and then we got the last invoice just last week, which represents the final remaining, which is two months.
Okay, I see that, but it's still, that's just another invoice that you showed me for fifteen thousand, three thirty-four-
Yes, that's the remaining.
For the period of-
May and June.
Twenty-fourth through June 23rd, but then what happens to this other invoice that's here for five thousand, nine hundred, twenty-six dollars, ninety-nine cents?
That was, that was, that was April, that was his usual bill.
So, where's the check that shows that this has been paid?
I don't have his check, it's already been sent out to him, I don't have his-
Can a county give us a check number?
I'm sure they could.
I, listen, I think we're going, I honestly, I think we're going too much, the, the-
Pay the guy.
The city attorney has sent his invoice on what he's been paid out, I think we go ahead and pay, we made a motion to go ahead and pay the balance to him, it came from him office, this is, this is his letter in, from Mr. Gary Brandenbergh himself, of fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars, and so I made a mo, I make a motion that we will go ahead and direct the finance department to cut Mr. Brandenbergh's final payment of the fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars, and I think everything is public record- And I think everything is public record. If you wanted to go and see a copy of the check, the number of the check, I think you go right into the finance department and access see a copy of it.
Yeah, and I would've liked to have that in my hand tonight so I could vote and know that I'm doing what I'm supposed to. So I'm not gonna vote and say, just because you say I can go in there and see it. I don't see it in front of me. I have a question. I'm entitled to my questions, and I'm gonna have my questions.
Sure you are, but the invoice comes, coming from the attorney that's giving you his amount. So either we pay him or we hold off his payment. So, I make a motion to go ahead and pay Mr. Brandenburg what's due, what's due him. And believe me, and believe me, if he did not receive it, I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Commissioner Bowden, if it, if it rests with you, if it helps, when Mr. Brandenburg was released, his bill was, I think, like 21K. And we were in the middle of April, and we were about to pay him his, his usual payment for April. Then the April payment came in. So he was paid that. And he sent us the last bill, which is this one, which is for the remaining two months, which is May and June, and that's the total. That's his, that's his invoice for the last two months.
Here's the thing. It's another one of these, here it is, I'm handing it to you tonight, I want you to authorize a check get cut for it.
But you saw this already. He sent it on April 24th. We all were copied on it. And then since that email, we paid him for April.
But how do I know that? I'm taking your word for it that it's been paid?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't like to take anybody's word for something. If you're telling me the balance is this, then show me the proof that that's the balance. That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner Bowden, this is, Commissioner Bowden, this is the city of Pahokee. And, and one thing that we do here is we do day-to-day business. That's what you hired me to do. And to sit in a commission meeting, to be questioned whether, whether we paid something to have proof to close out a contract.
And just show me the payment.
That, that says that, that's just day-to-day operations. This is his invoice to close out his contract.
No, that's not day-to-day operations. You're showing me two invoices, you're telling me that one of them's been paid, and yet I don't have any proof that one of them's been paid, and this is the amount. I don't wanna get into a whole big rigmarole about it, but just give me the paperwork. That's all I'm asking.
He's giving you the paperwork.
That's not the paperwork.
Yes, it is.
City attorney, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. We have a motion in second on the floor. If the commission don't have the necessary information to feel comfortable voting on this, then it will be delayed to the next meeting to whatever invoices she need is not...
Mayor, but I don't think that's...
It's gonna be the same invoice.
It's not to cut no one off. When we pay the light bill of the city, we don't access see the check or the, or the invoice of the light bill.
He doesn't bring it in here and ask us if we can pay the light bill, does he?
Wait, wait. These invoices came from Mr. Brandenburg through email, through each commissioner himself of what is being owed to, to him. So it's by right that we go ahead on and make a motion to pay Mr. Brandenburg what's due, due him.
Right, and Mr. Brandenburg gave you two invoices that say twenty-one thousand dollars.
I'm not done. I'm not done. I'm not done. And, and we have the invoices since April that was due to Mr. Brandenburg, April 24th, 2019. Now, I think we should go ahead and cut the check for the fifteen thousand. If anything else is owed to Mr. Brandenburg, I'm sure he would send us another invoice. But right now, let's go ahead and settle what we have in front of us from Mr. Gary Brandenburg himself of the fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. And then once, if, if Mr. Brandenburg, you could follow up behind that, Mr. Brandenburg, did you receive your payment? Okay? And, but let's go ahead and, let's, because we've been owed, if you could read the email also, he said he would like this done immediately as, as possible. So I think we've been holding this since April 24th, so let's go ahead and pay the man fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Anything else owed unto him, then he will let us know that. I think we dragging it out, it paid, this paid bill.
In addition to questions, Herr Nunn, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
No.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion fail of a two-one vote. The only thing we can do at this point is...
I can tell you this, I know what the response is gonna be from that firm. I'll, I'll let legal deal with that.
Then next time have the information.
I can tell him to resend the email to everyone else again, 'cause he's done that already.
I wasn't asking for the email, I was asking for reconciliation.
In, in addition, report, City Manager.
Yeah, just a little bit more. Back to phase two renovations of the Marina Restaurant and Campground and Public Parkside. We are, as you know, starting renovations, and we expect those renovations to go very rapidly here over the next several weeks. We originally had to June 30th, we had to June 30th to finish this project. And as I indicated, you know, a couple of commission meetings ago, that we had already requested, we had already anticipated that the project would take, you know, a little longer than June 30th, and I had anticipated that. And so, and so, we had already requested some extensions from the state to ensure that the project was, would have the ability...
All right.
Would have the ability to remain on course and not be penalized because we don't finish by June 30th. And so we have been provided that extension to August 31st, really September 1, 2019. So that's more than enough time to finish this project. And so we just wanted to make that announcement. I know there was some conversations about the timeline. So we have to September 1 to get all, get this project wrapped up, and we see, feel that that's sufficient time. The contract certainly feels that's enough time to do this project and, and get it wrapped up, you know, or completed. And so I just wanted to indicate that to the commission, 'cause that was a question prior to, how will we negotiate the June 30th date? And they've given us to August 31st. So, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We move on, we want to establish our town hall meeting. The manager was saying he was waiting on some input, and for a date, we're gonna go ahead and establish that date tonight. So if anyone wanna make any recommendations, let's get it around that.
Mayor, can we make some date recommendations, and then when we can get everyone, I can get those dates out to Commissioner Everett, he's not here, and Hill?
I'm saying, I thought that was gonna happen at the last meeting, and between the last meeting and this meeting, that's why we won't come up with a date.
I, I got offered, I think, a July first date, July 8th.
You can put out a suggestion, but I don't wanna...
No, that came from two commissioners.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna leave here tonight, two weeks later, and not have a date scheduled for our town hall meeting. We, we should have that tonight. If you got a suggested date for consideration, that's fine, based on the few that you have talked to, that would be a start.
I had a July 15 date as a suggestion.
Okay. Now, that's...
It is a week, is that? It's a Monday.
Third week.
Monday. Monday.
It's a Monday.
July?
Yes.
Fifteen? Okay. That's in agreement on entertaining a motion that affect, we go ahead and vote on it and move this forward.
So this would be the, the date?
Yeah, this is gonna be unless something change. This is the tentative date, this is it. And we're talking about...
I make a motion to accept the July 15 as a tentative date for a town hall meeting.
Second?
And let's add the time in that, too. We have tentative time.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, July 15, town hall meeting. Okay. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden that we have our town hall meeting scheduled for July 15, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Call for questions.
Yes, one question, Mayor. Now, what would the, would the topic come later? What would the town hall meeting be regarding, is it a community, a county, or what, what all would be into this town hall meeting?
Major community updates, and then any other, the general discussion that citizens wanna get some answers to. But it'll be an overall update on our major projects that should be coming on board soon or currently on board.
All right.
In addition to questions, Herr Nunn, are you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioner. The motion passes by three oh vote to have our next town hall meeting on July 15, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And my last comment is, I failed to mention moving night. The first moving night was a big success. We look forward, thank the chamber for co-sponsoring that. We wanna get those dates out to the public as soon as possible. We have food vendors out there, and it was a nice, nice community event. We wanna spend on that in the future. Okay. Our city attorney report.
I'll report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, business, the Marina lease update. I think you covered some of that, Mr. City Manager.
Somewhat, yes, sir. We, we did a resolution earlier, that's something that the state needed for its, for its package to provide to the governing cabinet for preparation for the meeting in July. There were some revisions that we had, we had made, we had discussed some of those revisions, and we're tracking down what those revisions were. They were never forwarded to the state when you made those revisions. And so, we gotta review what those revisions were, just gonna check the minutes and provide that to the state so they can add it to the lease. And then, your final discussion that the commission was having was the actual deposit. As you are aware, the, the last legal firm suggested that it would be, should be revised, but the commission never made, never made a decision on that. In the next 48 hours, they're gonna close this package, and it'll be prepared for the governing cabinet. So if there are any remaining revisions you wanna make in that regard, you would need to make that decision this evening.
I was thinking that we was gonna get, receive some sort of recommendation from staff, but I don't think we received that, and I don't know if the commission at this point wanna entertain a motion to increase the deposit or leave it as is. This is our last and final opportunity. We're just gonna be moving forward if we don't hear some type of recommendation or request.
What was the as-is deposit, Mayor? What was the deposit?
Did you research and find?
I think the current one is, is 20,000 deposit. I think that's the current deposit now. I didn't wanna put a dollar amount on this. There was, that was a decision that the commission was, was pondering as a collective group and to give us a recommendation. I truly don't know what a real-time deposit should be, so we were like leaning to make, for this group to tell us what it should be based on how you feel as a collective group. We can throw out a number out there, but I don't think we would be, you know, accurate in, in doing that. So...
Yeah, I, I really...
I know the former city, the former attorney had some numbers, you know, and he, he provided those.
I think at this point now, we're in the ninth inning, three outs, well, two outs, two strikes. I mean, it would've been nice if we had at least entertained or discussed it, but at this point, I, I could be mute at this point, but I can't speak for everyone, so if no one have any...
The last commission meeting, Mayor, I had made my recommendation, and then everybody else couldn't give a number, so I guess we entertain whatever else say, and then we just vote on whatever comes up. So it's left up to you and Commissioner Bowden, what y'all, numbers that y'all put out there. We have, Mr. Lambert.
Yes, Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Lambert.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners. I'd like to state that, in my opinion, we've already agreed upon this. This was a number that Gary had previously agreed. I think it's a little late in the game to, to be changing the, the game. And as you probably know, I've certainly deposited well over $100,000 already in improvements out of my own pocket to your Marina facility. So I, I think that what we'd already agreed on should stand, and I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. No motion.
So what was the agreement, Mr. Lam, what was the agreement Gary had said? 20,000?
Yes.
Because I, now, long shoot to measure, I know at the last commission meeting, when, when he was here, his suggestion was, if they probably pulled the record, that it should be increased from 20,000. That was, that was Mr. Lambert, Mr. Brandenburg's suggestion. So my, my, my suggestion was 30,000. I don't know what the other commissioners or mayor would say, but it's up to them. Up to the majority.
I mean, Mayor, if there's no new recommendations or motion, it will remain as is, and we having a discussion with Division of State Plans in the morning, indicating that all final revisions are final, and they'll close this package and they'll prepare it.
There's only, I guess, one other issue, Mr. Mayor. I think that there were other, that wasn't the only thing, right? Wasn't there something else that had come up?
There, there were small things like maintenance, lawn care, and those, those were the things I was looking for that we had already figured out, but they had not received those revisions that we had already agreed upon. So I have to go back and pull those out of the minutes and provide, but they were very minimal. Nothing significant like the, the deposit.
Thank you. All right, we'll, we'll move on. There were no formal...
So you need to make a motion then to go ahead and accept it as is and vote, but you don't have to make a motion on that? So that's, it just remain as is?
No, you've already made a decision on the other revisions already, so you don't have to make another motion. I just wanted to ensure you that that was your, your last conversation and you didn't finish it.
All right.
So, I'm good.
All right, we're now moved, we don't have any new business. We'll move to citizen comments and general concerns. Madam Clerk, at this time, we'll have a citizen comment card completed.
Yes, sir. The first one is from this any corps?
This corps, if you would, come to the mayor.
Mayor Bab and Vice Mayor Mervin and, well, Chandler and Bowden. I stand before you to tell you, the last meeting I came here to, to be here at the meeting, I goes outside and I get bullied on what I said. And you guys are icing, why is not a lot of people here? Probably that is what happening to them. When they leave out of here and go outside, they get bullied and be talked down to. But at the same thing, like I said, and I told him, it'll take more than that to stop me from coming to a meeting, because I pay tics, and I have the right to speak on things I wanna speak about. And it ain't all about him. And it ain't all about him. It about me and the city. And another thing that I wanna ask, I wanna ask the city manager, I see at the last meeting you said that you had a city engineer. Who is it? Who is that? And a project manager, who is that?
Who was our city engineer on projects? It's A.E. Engineering. They oversee all of our projects, like our Barfield Highway project that's coming up. That's the engineer on record for that project. They were the engineers on phase two for, phase one for the Marina. They oversaw our demolition project as well. And so any projects that are coming in the future, it's A.E. Engineering. I can give you their contact information if you want it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And what I was looking at too, at the last meeting that you guys had, I don't think that it was posted because I didn't see it anywhere, 'cause I was wanting to come. And I didn't see it on the board about y'all, about the last meeting that you guys had. I guess it was a call meeting or what have you. I didn't know nothing about that meeting. But anyway, I saw where it said that you had nine hundred ninety thousand dollars.
That's phase two project I just started at the Marina.
A grant, right.
Yes, ma'am.
And you didn't need to use nothing but eight hundred, eight hundred and forty-five? That what you said? You said that's all you guys would need?
No, ma'am, that's the bid that came in that won the award.
Won the award?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was trying to figure that one out, 'cause what I was finna say was about the soccer, you know, 'cause you was talking about the soccer thing, and what I was finna say that you could utilize the money that is left from that to help you out with that program.
Unfortunately, I can't do that. The grant is specified for that project, but we're gonna be okay with what we're doing with the soccer field as far as having some available funds. I can assure you.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Annie, could I ask you a question? The last commission meeting, you asked a question over the one you were here. Did you get your answer?
No, I didn't. I didn't get it, but I didn't get it because I wanted to know, you know, I wanted to know whether or not was Mr., the ex-lawyer that was here. I wanted to know, was he let go because he used Emilio? What was up? Because in my regulation, I remember the city manager using Emilio for a lot of things, and if he let, if he, if he was let go because of that, I feel like it should be equal. That's what I feel. If he was let go because he used Emilio, I feel like it's supposed to, what go for the gun, to go for the goose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I wanna just make a comment here if I can. I think that a lot of times the citizens are getting up here and asking questions, and then it's like Ms. Annie said, she comes back a couple of weeks later, she still hasn't gotten an answer. So I would like to make a motion that we move these questions, when they can't be answered here, and I understand that a lot of them can't, but we move them to old business. And then in two weeks, when it comes back, that they can get their answers, and the answers can be given in a public meeting so that everybody can hear the answer that was asked. So that's my motion.
Well, before we do that, the question that she, and I don't wanna get into this conversation 'cause I'm trying to move forward. The question she asked, I didn't have the answers.
Right, I understand.
I didn't vote on that conversation, so that she asked a question that didn't derive an answer coming from City Hall.
I understand.
So, and what we try to do is, if someone comes in for comments, and there are comments, it's not for us to answer, we try to get back to that person within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. Ninety-nine percent of the times when someone come in here and asks a question, I can't give them the answer. If this is an operational question, I gotta go back to staff, 'cause I don't wanna misquote myself. So, and when I do get that answer, they get that answer probably within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We don't wait two weeks to give it to them, because I don't think that's ever happened, and so I don't, we don't practice that. So I don't want us to now recreate the wheel on something that's already happening. So, but for that specific question she had, that wasn't a City Hall response. And I think Ms. Corps realized that that wasn't a City Hall response. That was a commission response.
And two, if you look at other commission, and I know we're a little different from everybody else, but from the county on down, they normally don't get an answer at those commission meetings. I think it should be a courtesy of an elected official to get back with a constituent with an answer, if they have one, but to be obligated to answer every single question that come before us. Just what the meeting would turn out to be, an answer and question session, which we got to find a better way to address a person concerning than the list every question that was asked and the spec, the answer at the very next meeting. Those are individual, this particular one is an individual question. She's asking commission, what was your justification for terminating the city attorney?
I understand, but what I'm being told is that a lot of people are telling me that they come in, they take their time and their effort to come to the meeting, and to be a part of the meeting, and to wait till the end so they can ask their question. And then they don't get an answer, which I understand, and I'm okay with, but then they never get an answer. And so when they never get an answer, then it just goes on and kind of festers in the community. So I was just trying to figure out a way that we can answer the questions that the people are asking. If they take their time and effort to come here and sit for two hours while we go through everything, so they can ask a question, it would seem like they should be entitled to an answer. And even, I don't know about anybody else, but if I had to wait two weeks and I got the answer, I'd be okay with that.
Ma'am, and that's not something we practice. I haven't, if someone asks a question, and it took them two weeks to get an answer, I'd like to know who they are, because that's something, we just don't practice that. And we can't drag in every question here, do an official business. That's not the venue for it. That's not what your charter says and the rules on this agenda. So, I mean, you welcome to do what you want, but we try our best to answer every question, if not here, then there after within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Because every question, you know, and we get some pretty interesting questions sometimes that takes, you know, some moments to actually think about and come back with an answer, but, you know, I try my best to answer every question. And sometimes the questions that are answered or get answered, it's not the answer that people want. And so they are sometimes say, well, I didn't get the answer I want. You got an answer, but it wasn't the one you were accepting. But we do our best to answer all our questions between twenty-four, forty-eight hours that come out of this meeting. And I've had very few people, if at all, that have came in here for a meeting, asked a question, I didn't know it, and I didn't get back to them within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. I haven't come across those folks that said, Mr. Wilson didn't call me back in twenty-four to forty-eight hours, and I didn't get an answer. Now, if you're getting those, and they're calling you specifically, you know, send them to me so I can follow up and make sure they get an answer. You know, let's not wait, like you say, two weeks to come in here. Give them to me immediately. Maybe I missed one.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I may, there are some legal implications. I think if you put that in writing, there could be some things that have legal implications that the city will be admitting to, or, you know, whatever. I think you put yourself in a position that could be compromising, but having said that, one of the things that the commission, I had mentioned in a previous meeting that I would like to bring back, rules of procedure that you may consider, and one of the things to address, the comment about people waiting for the entire meeting before speaking, is you may have public comment in the beginning of the meeting, and that's what I think most cities do. And then that way, people, if they wanted to voice something, they wouldn't have to stay, you know, for the whole meeting. They can just let you know, these are my issues, and they can also have public comment before you vote on issues, which will allow the commission to have input from the citizens about resolutions that may be on the commission agenda.
Well, part of the citizen comment agenda item only is intended for that, so we can hear their concern prior to discussing it.
I understand now. Well, what you may consider is just having everything and not limited to agenda items. Just have people come up, and they say whatever they want to on the two-minute mic, and then you hear it, and then that will prevent you from having a whole separate meeting at the end of your meeting to discuss things that you didn't anticipate.
And also, ma'am, if I can, Ms. Corps, if I'm not mistaken, all of our commissioners live within the same radiance in Pohokee, that you don't have to wait to a commission meeting to ask those questions. You see, I get asked questions all the time in the grocery store or wherever, just how, if you see your commission, whether you wanna ask a question, 'cause sometimes I don't think some of the questions has to wait two weeks. If you wanna know, know answer, if they have it, they can give you their answer, 'cause I really don't believe this up here all night long. Anyway, like, you know, like, we have one-on-ones. Anything you wanna know, we can always go get that answer and bring the answer right back to you. We don't have to wait till a commission meeting to do that. Come up here, Ms. Corps, they can't take you when you're on.
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Mervin, but still and yet, I had asked, and just like, just like Ms. Regina said, I didn't get an answer from that. But just like you said, I see you guys, but I didn't wanna ask you guys. I wanted to come up here, and I wanted to let it be stated that what had happened, it wasn't right. That's what I want to be stated, the same way you stated, y'all stated, for the attorney to not talk. I wanted to state that that wasn't right, the way he did. Because like I said, the same person used Emilio for to tear down the friendly cafe, the same person used Emilio for to pick up debris when the storm came, the same person used Emilio for to tear down the place that behind the chamber. Now, if that was the problem, 'cause you said, why would you, why would you use somebody that is, that is suing you guys? Well, the city manager used him during that time, and then you, y'all turned around and y'all let him go. That's what I wanna know. See, but I never got an answer.
We're not gonna, well, one thing, Mr. Senator, I'm not gonna back on that, but let me make that correction that she just made. That wasn't no, I said that. I think that was Commissioner Everett, so I do wanna make that correction. So when they make that correction, and also, if you really wanna know, oh, this appears not a place to discuss everything, as you heard what the city attorney says, there is, there could be all kinds of things. So if you wanna talk to me after, after, I'll be glad to talk to you.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, are there any additional comments, Corps?
Yes.
I had a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, what was your motion?
Yeah, I had a motion, right?
I didn't hear, state your motion.
My motion was that we do the two weeks and get them an answer.
Okay. Probably die for a lack of.
And move it to old business if, if they don't have an answer.
Okay, there have been a motion on the floor to give citizen an answer, if not here at the current commission meeting within two weeks. Are there second to that?
No, the motion is to move it to old business so that we can discuss it.
To move it to old business so we can discuss it. Are there a second to Ms. Bowden motion, Commissioner Bowden motion? As a lack of a second, Commissioner Bowden, thank you. In addition to comments, Clerk.
Yes, sir, we have five more remaining. The next one is from Ms. Kelly.
Ms. Velma Kelly?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Yes, I miss out a step. Me miss out a step. But we'll talk about several later. But anyway, I come, couple of concerns, since resident, by these dump trucks, eighteen-wheeler on McClure Road, and you know the road already, terrible. And as a, used to be bus driver called me tired. When you turn down off that hill, it's dangerous. It's very dangerous, 'cause you know it's, it's a deep edge right there, and we need some to put there. And at night, it's really dangerous, 'cause you can't see. You can't see. And then you got cars now pull it all the way up here, and you got to wait till them cars, you know, go, 'cause you don't wanna go too far over, 'cause you know, you gonna fall. And then, like, last week woke me up, 'cause we had these dump trucks rolling like they was on ninety-five, and every time they roll, my house shake. I mean, I got, so my house shake real bad, my water now start running slow. I don't know if it's a pipe now bust up underneath of the road or whatever, but my water is running real slow in my house. And, and I went to, I called, I called the city. I talked to Mr. Sandra, and he told me that he was aware that the eighteen-wheeler was running. And I say, no, the eighteen-wheeler ran last week before they, these dump trucks running now. And he said, but they were working by the tree farm. I say, yeah, but you can go around by the dump, and they coming from Belgrade, 'cause I know, 'cause I seen them, and they can go down Hookah Highway and come up, you know, seven fifteen way in the Pohokee, on that road right there. And, but they running up and down this highway like nobody live out here, you know, and we got little kids running across the road, you know, school out, and you know, kids running and stuff, and then I was feared to turn in my yard, one blow for me to move out the way, a dump truck. And I, and we really need, we really need some help out there. There slowly cars down, these buses down, and these trucks.
Ma'am, I can pass this information on to PBSO for us to speeding this concern. I do know, unfortunately, McClure is connected to the farming industry back there on the, on the, on the southern side. I also was aware that there was one particular farmer that was wrapping up his activities there, and he had several trucks and eighteen, and semis parked right there at the corner of McClure Road and South Lake. I know they wrapped up those activities. I'm not saying that was why there was an excess of ramped up dump trucks going through there, because the F.D.O.T. has, they've already sent us the email on where they're positioning the new truck route signs. And so, and they're on seven fifteen, coming out of Belgrade, going into Belgrade, Canal Point, State Market Road, at the railroad tracks. Those signs are not in place yet. I think she's referencing the agriculture trucks that are working out of the fields. You're not referencing dump trucks that are coming off seven fifteen, taking the back way and then connecting to South Lake. You're talking about the agriculture trucks.
They come in, they come in from South Lake, turning down McClure Road and going to the tree farm.
To the tree farm.
But when they can go around by the dumpway, they don't have to come that way.
But are they those big, heavy dump trucks that you see, like, going around?
Yes, big, big heavy dump trucks, and they sometimes they have loads and stuff, you know.
To our ordinance.
There's no truck, there's no, not there.
Someone who doing business in the city.
Not there.
To restrict their routing.
Not on McClure Road. We never had that ordinance in place zoning McClure Road. Has never been there, and it's probably never been there because they live around farming activity, so there's no way for those trucks to.
Do farmers use dump trucks?
Yeah, yeah, they use the long bed dump trucks and others, but that's why I was wanting to get a specific, and I referred over to PBSO for they can sort of do some review of what trucks are coming in and going out of that area. But they do use dump trucks, but, you know, this appears to be, you know, something a little different than farming. So if we have some, some transportation trucks that are, you know, cheating the route, then we need to take a look at that, but I doubt it because they're going to the tree farm, as she said. So these are agriculture dump trucks that are, that are operating out there. Again, it's unfortunate. That's the only route to the tree farm outside. If you go down South Lake, make a left on seven fifteen and come up, you know, on that street. But they're coming from Belgrade on the southern end of four forty-one, so they're naturally just going to McClure Road and not taking the extra drive around. If you do that, then the folks on that other side of town are gonna say they're getting the, you know, the increased traffic, and you've heard the folks from Baker Point Road come in here and say that. So we, I know it's the end of the season right now. So, uh, we, I, I know it's the end of the season, um, right now. And I, I don't know exactly what's being farmed now, uh, in that area. I'd have to ask some of the farmers, like Mr. Pope and others who do farm over there, what's going to be happening over the next six months before sugarcane picks up again. But for those, uh, for the speeding, we can address that for sure, uh, through our law enforcement, PBSO. The other activities, um, we would have to see exactly what's going on with the farming, uh, in that area right now. I was told last week that they were wrapping up their, their last bit of, uh, things that they had to take care of in those areas for us. Uh, I think Pope Farms was concerned. He actually called me and told me that they would have some additional trucks just parked there at McClure and South Lake. And he did. And then eventually twenty-four, forty-eight hours later, they were gone. So that could have been the excess activity that you were experiencing as far as the trucks coming in and out.
They weren't gone right then. They, because they, they did it three days.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they was up and down the road. But like I say, it's another dirt road that they can go around. They don't have to come down that road, but always a road to go around.
Correct, and until...
I, I, I went that way to see could they come that way. And it's right by, they come right out by the dump.
And until the, until this commission can review that and make some changes in, in town operations for those type of, uh, trucks, it'll, it'll continue to be there access to those farming fields and tree farms and sugarcane and corn in that area. That's prob, and that's the main reason why McClure Road is, is, you know, is dilapidated as well. Because the heavy trucks using so, so extensively.
Totally reconstructing that road, we, we're gonna have to make a truck route on that old dirt road. That's something we're gonna have to address.
I, I agree, yes.
That's something we're gonna definitely need to look at and, and try to solve. Because we're, we're getting ready to spend about four point five million to totally reconstruct McClure Road.
Barfield.
Barfield Road. But McClure is one, two...
Yeah, we, we've submitted, we've submitted for three point four million for McClure Road. Um, and so if we get funded for that project, yes, you're correct. We would have to make some critical decisions about moving forward once that road is repaired, what type of vehicles will be allowed. Um, and you would have to look at all of the, the activity and taking into consideration that this is, this is farming country. And, uh, we would have to look at some alternative routes if, if, when that conversation comes.
But just please get, get us some, slow down. Get us some police is out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My God, Regina, you're right back there.
In addition to calls?
Yes, sir, the next one is from Mr. Herbert Crawford.
Good evening, I'm Herbert Crawford, eighty-eight thirty-three Eldorado Drive. Um, question, um, I received several calls in regards to this year's Back to School Bash. Um, we send out literature through the schools that the bash would be the twenty-seventh of June. And, I mean, July, I'm sorry, July twenty-seventh, July twenty-seventh?
No, ours is always August. Always August.
Well, because the school starting, um, um, the county and they, they sent out the information that the Back to School Bash was July twenty-seventh. Um, because school starts earlier this, this school around. So we received call...
Actually, you have multiple cities doing their own Back to School Bash date. That's like a, a threshold of where they want to do it. But ours is always scheduled for August tenth, just like Belgrade's is scheduled for, I think, August third. South A's is, I think, August tenth as well. Um, ours is August tenth.
Uh, teachers report Back to School on the fifth.
Right, but school doesn't start today, week later, right?
True. Um, but anyway, the co, the conversation, the call I got from the county regarding to, I guess, where we've been, I guess, with the collaboration with the county and different agencies on the Back to School Bash. Um, now that they were trying to keep everything, I guess, unified throughout the counties and whatnot with the Back to School Bash. But at this point now, I guess, um, I, I don't know, we've set a date, we say in August tenth?
We've always had that date set, August tenth.
And location?
Same, same location.
At the school?
Okay, Jim, high school, Jim.
On the tenth?
On the tenth, that's in Polkay, you know, I saw.
Because I know, there was a conversation about the tenth. I know they're saying that because of the tenth and it's getting ready for school, that would be, uh, uh...
I, city hasn't had any conversations with anyone on that, so I don't know what conversations you've heard, but that's our date. If anything changes, I'll update the commission.
Okay, okay, so the tenth at the mi, at the high school?
Yep, if it changes, I know there are some conversations of logistics for the high school. That's an ongoing conversation, but the date hasn't changed or the location, as of, as of now, hasn't changed.
Okay, so the county, so, all right, I guess, uh...
Who's having it in July?
The, well, that's the county OCR, um, um...
That, that's actually, that's actually the starting date for Back to School Bashes, but it's not the date for everybody. And, and, and it's, it's, it's always been like that, that they have a starting date for Back to School Bashes. But you don't have to do your Back to School Bash on that day.
You don't have to do it, but that was, I guess, the county was trying to keep everything unified. So what was happening in the past prior to, um, us unified, the, Belgrade would have one this day, South Bay would have one. And the same people was going around to all the different events. So they were trying to bring everything into one, saying, so we, it was on the same page.
But that's why we do registrations and we prevent that. We, and, and those things are collaborated with, with, with all the schools, um, when we do that. We, we've never had an issue with, you know, parents coming from one Back to School Bash coming to another one. We've always get three registrations.
Prior to, we had that issue.
Prior to, yeah, but...
And that's why, and then the last couple of years, well, three or four years now, we unified to, to do away with that. So right now, I know, I was called to a meeting today. So now, the schools now looking to do it at West Tech. And I, my concern was, you know, so now we're, it's separating what we was doing that we worked to get in, put in place so everything was as one. So now, um, the district and, and the school, and the county looking out to do one at West Tech on the twenty-seventh, um, to do it. Well, I guess the schools, whatever, so that's the thing is right now, it is because the dates and whatnot have changed. So my, my concern was if the twenty-seventh or whatever, or whatever, you know, the piles to be can work and, and not get caught out doing two separate events or whatnot. So that was just one of the concerns they, um, in the meeting today we had. And, and so I'll bring it to the commission and to, um...
We're, city folk is fine with August tenth. We're good. Yeah. We're, our, our event is just fine, we're good.
City clerk, are there additional comments, Corby?
Yes, sir, Ms. Mary Dyer.
Good evening, Mary Dyer, seven Lakeside Circle. Um, I was a little confused on the explanation that Mr. Williamson gave on East Main Street. It's, East Main Street, you and I had talked about the sign could go at the corner of the chamber, which is city property. So why would that be any different than North Main Street? We talked about the sign, second sign that you had promised and that you even said at the unveiling of the sign on the north end that there was going to be one on the south end.
Eventually, yeah.
And you said you didn't know where to put it. And I said, well, what about the corner at the chamber because that's city property? Why would that be a problem?
I didn't say it was a problem, but, you know, we're looking at...
You said you would have zoning problems and all that tonight?
No, I didn't say we have zoning problem. I said building, planning and zoning hasn't gotten back with me on exactly where it should go in that area. And beyond that, if we're looking at economic development, yes, Commissioner Bowden, not to say this, but that building probably will not be there in the coming years because we're going to end up selling all that property, uh, for economic development. So we want to, you know, do this the right way and carefully, um, when we make that decision of where that sign should go. It's just, it's very peculiar area, you know, beginning of East Main, uh, to put a sign up. We just don't know exactly where it's going to go. You can't go across the street because it's private property, and that's for economic development as well.
But you had agreed with me that that was a good...
No, I didn't agree to anything because I haven't talked to the family of Mel Tillis yet, um, about the second sign. And I still haven't talked to him. And once I have a conversation with them, I'll get some more clarity. Who, by the way, uh, didn't make a request for a second sign, that's something that we were going to do. So, um, it's just, it's, it's one of those things where we, we'd like to do a second sign, but we have to think about the future of that corner as well and what's going to be there. Um, and how that is going to look eventually, you know, in, in another year or so. Um, and so that's something that we have to talk, take into account before we erect another sign, that's all I'm saying.
So how long are you talking about?
I, I can't give you a timeline tonight.
Even if it's on that corner, it would have to be a smaller sign, correct? Because it's a very small area.
Well, no, I understand.
I'm thinking, I'm picturing in my mind where you talk on the corner where the edges is...
On that, where the hedge is, I understand it would have to be a smaller sign. But when you're coming from the south and you come around past Town Center Cafe and you come around, you would see it. It'd be facing you, right there on that corner.
This way, okay.
Yeah, when you're coming from...
I got you. From the bankway, you come from, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, stop going, city.
But I, but I do think that, I know we did talk about it, it is in the minutes. I think we need to go ahead on and try to get the, even the smaller one, go ahead on and just, and rectify that sign to be done.
I agree.
Um, the next one is from Mr. Kareem Murray. Um, I don't think he's here. And then the last one is from Mr. Carl Morrison Seer.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, you're right.
First, I would like to say, uh, thank you for, uh, coming up with a date to hold yourself accountable for town hall meetings every quarter. I have a question in reference to the resolution that was added tonight, uh, resolution, uh, twenty nineteen dash thirty. If I can get some clarity on that, because that was in reference to a meeting that was held on January the eighth, twenty nineteen, dealing with the property at, uh, fifteen oh one Ram Road. If I can get some clarity on that, please? Because when it was in the meeting, it was stated that that property, when it was going to the governor and the cabinet, was in reference to housing. Tonight, I heard another word added on to that, and Ms. Bowden, you called that and you asked that question. So I'd like some clarity, please. I guess I'm talking to the lights.
From you.
Read the resolution, I want some clarity.
You, you want the resolution explained again?
Yes.
Ask the resolution again?
Listen.
Okay, uh, the, the, the item was on, the state basically asked for additional information for there to be, um, uh, when, when, when the easement, I mean, when, I'm sorry, when the, when the city, um, before the, before the issue goes forward, the state wanted to find out, um, and make sure that it was a part, housing was part of the comprehensive plan. And so that the, they wanted to make sure that the city mentions in its comprehensive plan that housing was contemplated, like having, wanting to have housing is contemplated. And so they asked for, um, in addition to, you know, asking for the release of the deed restriction for the property described, they also wanted to, the, the city to acknowledge that housing was contemplated in its plan. And so the manager, um, spoke with the state. He showed them, you know, what was contemplated in terms of the resolution. The state agreed that this is what we wanted to see, and so it had to be brought before the commission, and they wanted to see it in a resolution format. And so it's not anything tricky or, you know, anything mysterious. It's just, it's just adding, so he, he, he explained earlier that the economic development piece was just, he sees it as also spurring economic development. And, but housing was all the state was concerned with, so that's all we put in there because that's what was, the state asked for.
Okay, that's what the orders were done on, housing, housing. It wasn't anything else added on that, sir. Now, if that's your decision, it was not their decision.
So all the resol, the resolution is what matters, so his backup is less important. What matters is that we put in there housing and that's what the state wanted to see. So just, you can really just ignore, you know?
No, 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 I go by documentation.
So, but that's what was, what passed was the resolution referencing the housing component that the state wants to see, that's all. So it's, it's not anything, that's why I'm saying, it's not anything, um, complicated. It's, it's, it's what was put in there, whatever he interpreted is, is actually, he, he interprets it as being for spurring economic development and all of that. But the state asked for housing to be addressed. So there's really nothing else that I know even to tell you. It's just, you know, we put it in the resolution, that's what the state wants, it passed by the commission, and that's it.
Well, I, I just want to document what was stated and what was the agreement, okay? And everyone can go back to that meeting, January the eighth of twenty nineteen, and forward it to two hours and fifty-four minutes and see what was stated. Because I won't get into that. If I have to do something else, I will, but I want to make sure it's documented what was stated.
Any, in addition to comments?
No, sir.
City clerk, thank you. We're moving now briefly to the comments concerning of the city commission. And I'll start with Commissioner Bowden.
Good evening, thank you all for coming out. Um, I have a couple of questions. Who actually, yeah, this is for the, the city manager, who actually cleaned up, um, the leftover stuff at the hospital? And was there a cost for that?
Who cleaned up, excuse me, cleaned up what again?
Yeah, who cleaned up that, that mess that got left over at the old hospital? I saw some workers over there and they were with grapple trucks and stuff. And they cleaned up the, the stuff that was just sitting there. And was there a cost for that?
I'm sure it was, uh, I think that company was, uh, Mulo out of Belgrade.
And what was the cost?
Couldn't tell you tonight, I have to go into staff and get that answer back. But I'm pretty sure it was Mulo, that was the company that came and helped remove that remaining debris outside. But I have to get a definitive answer for the cost to you.
Okay. And did we decide that we're going to have a July meeting, are we going to do a budget meeting?
Our budget meetings, though, will be announced probably between now and the end of next week. Once the finance department finishes all of their interdepartmental meetings with directors for budgets for departments. Then we'll announce our schedule for our budget meetings, um, for, uh, one for July, one for August, and of course, the final approval in September.
Okay, and has the request for the city attorney been advertised, and if so, where?
No, it, we just wrapped up our, our, in RLI development, that's a proposal for services. And it should be going out within the next several days, um, once we get it, uh, all formalized up. Again, we wanted to get the, you know, city attorney in place, and then we started working on a, an advertising document to be put out to the public. So, uh, hopefully in the next, uh, several days, not, probably not by the end of this week, it'll probably sometime next week.
Okay, and does that count in our ninety days?
No, it counts once it, because you have to put a date on it. It counts for the date on that document, you can't backdate it. You, you can't do a proposal like that publicly. It has to be that date that it goes out and when it closes.
So then it would be ninety days from that date?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're saying it'll be like next Monday? Because you gave me a, an answer before and you said that it was going to be within about seven days. And that was last Monday, so that's why I'm asking, I just want to nail it down when it's actually going to get done.
It's, it's going to get done. It takes us, it, it takes a while to formulate an RLI, i.e. proposal of this type to go out. We've never done it before, uh, for legal services. So it's something quite starkly different than, I have to go rely on legal, you know, expertise to give me that information because it's not like a typical, uh, RAP that we do for projects. It's completely different professional services. And there was no template, meaning it was never done... And there was no template, meaning it was never done here before for the prior. So we had to go figure out what that language should look like for advertisement. So it took a little longer than expected.
Okay, so Monday. And then you were talking earlier, you said we're going to convert a field at MLK for soccer, correct?
Yes, yes.
Shouldn't we have some kind of community input on that? I mean, we did this football field out here apparently. And people are saying we didn't have any community input. So I think it would be nice if we had a couple of workshops or something where people could come and say, yes, this is a great idea. No, this is a horrible idea, you know, and give some community input on that. So do I need a form of a motion to have some community input on that?
I don't think we need a workshop on preparing our soccer field. It's a great location. There's, I mean, we did our due diligence in ensuring that this location is perfect for soccer. I don't think we need a workshop on soccer field.
I understand, but I don't play and you don't play. So shouldn't we ask the people who actually play?
Actually, I have played soccer in my former life, in athletics.
Yeah, so did I, but I don't play anymore.
Then trust the staff that we know what we're doing, please.
And then you said there's landscaping and foundation revisions? Oh, my big question is if we move them to...
That foundation revisions means the grass there is thicker than usual for playing soccer.
Right.
You have to cut that grass down to a minimal to where you can play on it. I see somebody in the audience nodding because he knows what I'm talking about. And once that grass is out a certain length, then we can maintain it. There are certain areas of the field that sort of dip a little bit. So we're going to shore those areas up by bringing in a special type of sand and planting new grass seeds to ensure it's smooth.
So we're not going to like laser level it or anything like that? Is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am, not right now.
Okay. And then my big question is, how are they going to play at night? Are there lights down there?
They don't, we're not planning to put lights out there. There won't be any night playing at nights.
Didn't they play at night over here?
When it was a regular, this grass football field, they played up till about 8 o'clock until the lights went off, yeah. And we, you know, encountered some additional issues with that as well at night. So again, this is a perfect field for soccer play. And we think once we are finished with it, the community and those soccer players will be pleased.
But in a couple of months, we're going to be at, where they change the time back and then it's going to get dark around 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the evening.
Yeah.
So then there won't be any night play at all?
No, it won't be any night play at all. Subsequently, um, I had an opportunity to look at a lot of soccer fields in Palm Beach County. Very few of them have lights at night. I live right beside one. And the ones that do have, they're more the professional ones like high schools. But there are more soccer fields that close at 8:00 p.m. with no soccer, with no lights than there are with lights. And so we can't start adding on costs because...
I used to play soccer all over Broward County and we had lights.
We're working on a soccer field, Commissioner Bowden, and I think they want to be pleased.
All right. And, um, why did we not get financial reports in our package tonight? You said, you mentioned something earlier. You had them, but...
Yeah, they're right here. I didn't have a chance to put them in each packet. And then some of the commissioners didn't come in, but they're right here. And then we didn't have our director of finance here, but I brought them with me because I want to make sure you get them.
Okay, do those include the credit card expenses?
No, it can. It's overall expenses for the city of Pohoke. It's our budget actuals for general fund, budget actuals for debt services fund, budget actuals for capital projects fund, budget actuals to Marino Campground Fund, budget actuals to cemetery fund, and just our general spending. If you want me to pull that out and give that to you, I can give you the entire bill just of credit cards. That's not a problem. But it's not in here. It doesn't say credit card on the financial report.
Right. But I'm asking, can we get a copy of the credit card expenses monthly?
Not a problem.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we approve those financials and credit card expenses monthly before anything gets paid.
Wait a minute. What do you mean before anything gets paid?
Before the credit card, is it on automatic pay?
Commissioner Bowden, you can't make a motion like that for day-to-day services that you want to look at the credit card before it again gets paid because that's an ongoing expenditure. Not like we pulling at the credit card, using it all the time, but we do day-to-day business. Sometimes we need a credit card to order a product for parts and wrecks or an office supply product that instead of doing a check, you do the credit card. Still budgeted. There's no extra money that we're spending on our budget. But you can't tell us to bring you the statements or tell you, bring you an order before we make a purchase. You just can't do that in day-to-day operations.
I didn't say before you made a purchase. I said before it gets paid, the bill.
You can't do that either because our credit cards are on a cycle of payment that is automatically generated from finance. You can't hold that payment up.
Is that true, Attorney?
Mister, Mister, um, manager, the commissioner made a motion. There was no second. And so that issue is dead at this point.
So then I'd like to ask you, Attorney, is that true? That we cannot look at the credit card bills and approve them before they get paid?
I think it would be tedious for your city operations. I'm not saying you can't do it.
Yeah, I didn't ask if it was tedious. I asked if we could do it.
I don't think it's practical, but you could probably do it, yes.
Haven't, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but haven't you in the past asked to see the credit card bills monthly? And then haven't you asked to see the financial reports monthly?
That's a little different than wanting to see what we're about to pay, that we need to pay that's being generated automatically through, you know, our pay services. That's different because we're, I get the point of financial, uh, reports. We understand that. And you're getting that, it's right here. But we cannot hold up our automatic credit card payments, which is already budgeted per line items in departments, so you can see it. Because then we'll be late paying it. Can't do that.
Commissioner Bowden, what you can do in your motion is just, um, have as a directed policies that the financial, uh, the credit card, uh, statements, expenses will be part of the monthly financial report.
Okay.
Not if you're saying that the bills will not have to be held up, but we need to make sure that we can at least...
But we'd actually be able to see the statement? Okay. I amend the motion then so that we can have the credit card statement? Is that? The credit card statement as a part of the financial that are supplied to us monthly?
I can second, I'll second that motion. It's been moved by Commissioner Bowden and seconded by the mayor there. The financial, the financials, uh, reports include the credit card report on a monthly basis. Call for questions?
Don't we already have, uh, a motion that was already in previous...
No, it was only a suggestion by the mayor.
Wait, let me finish. When Commissioner Walker was here, that was something that was already in place of a monthly, quarterly report of credit cards and expenditures and all of that, correct?
Yeah. I think part of her rationale is she don't feel we're getting it.
Exactly.
So we just maybe emphasizing a previous motion that we would receive monthly financial statements to include now the credit card expenditures. So just an added layer to make sure that we receive all the requested documents that were previously requested.
Okay.
And it's, it's not creating any additional work. It's just a matter of including it so we all have it.
I can go, but I just thought it was already, I remember Walker was, uh...
Okay. Any additional questions? Her and under, you ready for vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passed by unanimous three to zero vote.
Okay, and then I just have one other thing. In that report that the former legal gave us, um, one of his things that he said that we should do is ask the I.G. to do a procurement procedure audit. So I make a motion that we ask the I.D. to come in and do a procurement procedure audit.
Second that. I don't think that's an expense to the city to personally... It has been moved and properly seconded. And we request the...
What's, can I ask a question? What's this request is? What is it?
What they had in the, the report that the, the former attorney gave us.
Procurement procedures.
Mister Mayor?
Wow.
If you all would allow me to review it before you have the, um, the, you know, the inspector general or the, you know, the county come in and take a look at it, which will probably shed, you know, some, you know, negative light because you, they're coming in and doing something that maybe we, we don't even have a chance to review yet. If you allow me to review it and if I have some purchasing suggestions, I'll be happy to come back and bring those suggestions in the form of an ordinance or tweak the ordinance that you have. But if we can try to do what you're seeking, if I can get a better idea about it and I'll have a conversation maybe offline with Commissioner Bowden and, you know, figure out what her concerns are. And because I don't quite know what the recommendation involves. And before we, you know, invite others in, if you allow me to just review that process and then come back if it's appropriate, um, you know, I think, I think that will probably be the, the better route. Because I'm not sure what Mr. Brandonberg is referring to. And I'd like to at least come up to speed on what that could be and, um, and help guide that process if there is a process that's needed, um, for guidance.
Okay. Um, I'll just grow my second at this time to allow the attorney to take a look at our procurement procedures and make whatever recommendation she feel that would meet, uh, the intent of our previous attorney request.
Okay, thank you, Mister Mayor.
And if that don't work, we can always bring it up at some point in time.
Thank you.
In addition?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mervin?
Mayor, commission residents, you know, listening to this stuff tonight and, you know, you can laugh about it because you got to understand where and things are going. And you can see agendas going that should not go. Okay, we have a city now attorney, that city, okay? It's not fair you bringing up your past legal, um, recommendations from your past legal advice. Let the city attorney that we have, let her do her job and let her, let her vet the papers of the ordinance, the resolutions that come before. I think she's very well qualified to do her job. Let her, let her, let her do her job. And, and if we got to do everything, Mr. Brandonberg, so we might as well have Mr. Brandonberg still sitting there. But right now, let the attorney do her job and let her, and let her bring forth to the commission what is accurate. She's not there to bring up her, her thoughts, her feelings. She's up there to bring accurate information for the betterment of the city of Pohoke. Now, and let's, and let's just start working together. If we work together, I believe we can get better results instead of just, yeah, we can listen to our constituents out there talking and speaking, but we got to work together and see what the betterment of the whole community, uh, of our community. But let's, let's, let's draw units because you can feel the divisionist, you can feel the divide, you can even see it in the audience, you can hear from the residents that's asking, what are y'all doing up there? Y'all are so divided up there, they can hear it. So let's try to get on one accord for the betterment of our city. We got to be commissioners. Read your ordinances, read your resolutions, go to your one-on-ones. Some of the questions that have been asked up here, a lot of things can be asked in their one-on-ones. We have two weeks prior to every meeting, commission meeting, that you can walk in the door any given day. You can call any given time. A lot of questions that we hear 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock at night, we can, we can, we could, we could do it a little better than answering our one-on-one questions, getting some questions answered before we even come to our commission meeting. Because it's looking like we're, we're pulling against one another instead of trying to pulling, um, together. I think we all have a love for our community. We all want it to work. And what even our residents has to understand is that their, their, uh, politics doesn't work how they think it should work. We can't move how they think we could, we could do it. Because you have, you are governed by how things are, are, are to be worked. But anytime a citizen have a question that they want to ask me, I have people to call, to call, I will give you my answer. But no, I'm not going to sit up here and give you every answer that comes up on citizen comments. But if you want to know my concern about it, I will, I will talk to citizens. I do that. They call me. Some even come to my house and even ask. But let's try to pull together and stop trying to put this device and this division in our community. And let's work together as a body. That's who we are. And have a good night.
Thank you. Lean the turn.